Yeah, okay, so it is six o'clock. May the second, this is the beginning of the work session for Tuesday, May the second of the Carlton City Council. You take the role, please.
Mayor Linda Watkins.
Here.
Councillor Grant Erickson.
Here.
Amy Brandow. Shirley Ward Mullen. Kevin Skipper.
Here.
Councillor David Samuel Hill.
Here.
And Carolyn Thompson-Riser.
Present.
Shirley Ward Mullen is absent, all other councillors are present and counted for.
Thank you. Um, let's see, the first, let's see, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is HB, there she is. But the record shows Shirley, Councillor Shirley Ward Mullen has arrived. I like her. Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to you, city manager.
And I'm gonna turn it right over to the city attorney.
And I'm gonna turn it over to Erin. My name's Erin Highsall, I kinda like to know the audience, so you guys all have figures, who are the couple folks we have online? You know, are those? City employees, okay.
That is our police chief and our assistant city manager and finance director.
Which one's which?
Kay Martinez is our chief of police and Christie Martinez is our finance manager and also.
Assistant city manager.
Thank you, my tongue just went.
So we have no.
Sorry, Christie.
President, right?
Not right now.
Any of the councillors or any of you guys moonlight as, as. Media, okay, just like to know the audience, this isn't, uh, this is open, so it's not attorney flying privilege, so I wanna make sure that we. Where that, I ain't gonna change anything, any advice I give or any of those things. I am consulting through CIS, your insurance carrier, for the changes coming. On two homelessness bills that were passed in 2021, but take effect July first of 2023. So I'm getting similar calls and trying to help everybody, the, the way that they were written required essentially everyone, every city, county in the state to make amendments to their current ordinances. So Tyler's got a really close, good, rough draft, I have a few comments from going through it. But that's where we're at. Every, especially the smaller cities are like, there's at least a contingent of the population and the electeds for most of those that are like. We don't have an acute problem, why do we have to do this, why does it have to be so loose, et cetera, et cetera, so. Uh, I can be good news, bad news on that today. There was actually a worst bill moving its way through the legislature that got killed today. So that was, uh, it was deemed the Right to Rest Act. It was moving forward, it would have actually made some of these already difficult decisions you're having to make much more difficult, and it was officially dead as of this afternoon. Um, so that's the good news. The bad news is like the environment that we all grew up in, I grew up in the Vancouver side, but here in the Northwest where like. You could trespass somebody for being on public property, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, all of public property is gone. The state, Oregon's state legislature has basically said through these, these new changes. That you must carve out somewhere for them to lawfully sleep and rest. A lot of times the term camping gets thrown in there as something sleeping, resting, camping, you have to allow them to camp. That's not the case, the case law and the changes. Deal with sleeping and resting and then the removal of established campsites. So what Tyler has drafted is from some of the things that we kind of felt like were the. Best, worst option type of thing, like. Um, for your guys' community, what would probably work, and the general rubric of it is it becomes illegal camping. After they've been there for twenty-four hours. But up until that, so that gives you the out, you have been provided somewhere to sleep or rest, but we're not gonna allow you to. Stay indefinitely in any one spot, and so the way it's drawn up right now is that that delineation is at the twenty-four hour mark. And for most smaller cities in particular, I think it's a safe place to go. Safe being. The more restrictive you are, particularly right now going into July first, the bigger the target is for you to be sued. The less restrictive you are, you know, you may create some, build it and they will come, or you may, you know, create an issue you don't currently have. But you decrease the target size for litigation. Couple of things that were, so I am one of the attorneys representing Grants Pass, which was one of the lawsuits that. Kind of built up, that one's all around the federal side of things, but that kind of led to this. The way that they're doing this is they're requiring it to be in the ordinances. It used to say that you guys could just make policy changes, so the mayor could come, you know, you guys could come to a consensus essentially. Direct the police chief, hey, this is how we're gonna handle those things, it says it's illegal twenty-four seven, three sixty-five everywhere. But hey, police chief, just give everybody a twenty-four hour warning ahead of time. And that would have been fine, you would have still been compliant, and the way that these things have changed it is. Very novel in the law, it's not the way we treat other things in the law, if. Even the severely mentally insane commit a murder, we arrest them, we charge them with murder, and then through the process, they can raise a defense of insanity. And that's how it works, murder applies to everybody, on this very unique issue of homelessness, we're, the, the state legislature is taking a different tack and saying, no, the cities and counties must. Carve out somewhere where people can lawfully sleep or rest, you cannot outlaw it everywhere, all the time, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, there must be an answer to. In your ordinances, not through policy, to that question, where can I lawfully sleep tonight if I don't have a place to stay?
Is that a fallout from the two, um, the Boise and the Grants Pass decisions?
Kind of. The Boise and the Grants Pass decisions. Live in this federal law of Eighth Amendment bucket, so most of the litigation that was whether or not it was cruel and unusual punishment. To arrest people for sleeping in the parks if they didn't have anywhere to go. And that one was weird, they actually came up with like a ledger, on this side of the ledger, you have how many shelter beds your jurisdiction has. I'm guessing Carlton is close to zero. Okay, and then on the other side, it would be from the last point in time count, however many homeless people there were in Carlton. And if you have more homeless people than you do shelter beds, then you couldn't enforce your twenty-four seven, three sixty-five ban. That's how Martin and Boise, uh, Martin v. Boise and that Grants Pass litigation, that's, that's really the crux of both of those cases. The House bills that turned into why you guys have to change your ordinances. Were pitched and presented and made their way through the legislative process under the like heading of codifying Boise. Or codifying Grants Pass, but they really didn't, the, the, the rubber beating the road part of it is not that ledger I just talked about. It's really something different that, that we're referring to as time, manner, and place restrictions. Again, just can't have it banned twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and they're not telling you exactly how you have to do it, there's different cities trying different things to fix this. But you do have to have reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. The, the whole of it needs to be reasonable as to time, place, and manner, and what they're gonna do come July is they're going to now be able to go online. Audit everybody's codes, figure out which ones they don't think are reasonable, and sue them for, uh, not just. To make you change it, but then give them a bunch of attorney's fees on top of it.
Well, that's, how do they define? Go ahead.
Who, you said sue them, who's suing who?
I, I anticipate the vast majority of that litigation to come through the Oregon Law Center. They're the ones that have sued, that sued Grants Pass.
Okay, so that.
That group.
That group then could sue Carlton if they don't like.
They could, and, and they will almost certainly pour some resources into doing this type of audit and. Go after those they feel are most restrictive and unreasonable.
So we have it set up where. Someone comes in, okay, you got this twenty-four hour time period, they're there twenty-four hours, so. Then they get up. Can they just keep going? From north side of town to the south side of town, to the east side, and then in five days be back to the north side?
Yes. I.
Well, could like one night in town, then move on, okay.
No, there's a, that's a separate constitutional amendment issue where you couldn't really say like.
I'm trying to understand what, where we, what.
Yeah, gosh, believe me, I put a lot of thought into trying to find a better, a little more politically correct term. But really the box, the sandbox you're being made to play in, best case scenario is. You may, you wave a wand over it with resources that actually gets that individual off the street, or you're playing whack-a-mole. And they are being forced to move so that you're not having to cede this corner of the park to them indefinitely, right? But, um, you, you don't, you don't have the ability to just banish them or really take them to jail either. You know, uh, most of this stuff is now non-enforceable, is like an arrestable offense. So it does put you in a, a different sandbox than we've always been used to playing in, for sure. I think, Mayor, you had a question too?
I, I think you answered it.
Main reason I'm here is to answer questions, think the finer details of what, from between, there's only a couple of things from the draft, do you guys have that draft in front of you?
There's only a couple things in the draft that was there that I thought we needed to probably flag and. Things that consider removing. Maybe it's really a decision to just work through those.
Better, yeah.
Under age fourteen, oh, one, oh, B, which, can't pair with an E L S. I would recommend taking out the reference to sleeping bags, blankets, mattresses, mattresses is probably fine. Beds is probably fine, but sleeping bags, blankets, it doesn't change the definition to remove it fundamentally. And those are hot G words from the Boise Grants Pass litigation, that was some of the stuff that the judge is really keyed in on, like. You're, you're banning, you're banning them from having blankets?
Yeah.
You know, what types of arguments that would stem from those with. Can maybe just clean file or something that still captures that. Can't pair with that, it's that. Questions about that.
I actually have a question, I'm, I'm not so concerned about banning material stuff as, as, um, maybe restricting. When and where people can be, because if it, if it's fair for, to restrict citizens, residents, whatever. From being in a certain place, why would it be unfair to restrict?
Fair unfortunately isn't really the question anymore. I mean, it's not a matter of what's fair or not, we can cer, you can certainly draft this up, so, and I. The way this is, would do that, would make it so that it applied to everyone and not just those experiencing homelessness.
Okay.
And I've, I've heard that concern before and I appreciate it, um, the way the legal stuff works is that. Like that cruel and unusual punishment thing in Grants Pass, perfect example of what you're talking about. If I went to Grants Pass right now, they're kind of locked in time. Because they have this injunction in place and the appeal process is still playing out, so they're basically locked in time from before this, okay? If I went to Grants Pass right now and state, state put a tent right next to a homeless guy in Grants Pass. Under those cases, I could receive a ticket. Immediately upon first contact, and the guy next to me could not. If he was actually experiencing homelessness, because I have a residence and the resources that go buy a hotel. And how are the cops supposed to even make that determination? You know, and if they're lied to, how do they go prove it wrong? And it, it creates this whole other, you know, layers upon layers of other issues. So you're right, the way this is would also potentially give people that have the ability to stay where they want to go camp for twenty-four hours.
So we have, this part down here, we require people to be out after dusk. But what you're saying is that, what I'm hearing is that if somebody came in and they had no other place, if they were homeless, they could go down there and camp overnight.
Correct, but that doesn't mean that you have to offer everywhere. Just because you can't shut it off to everywhere, all the time in the city limits, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Does not also mean you, all public property is fair game. So that's where Tyler kind of took some, and there's under.
Yeah, section zero.
Oh, three, oh, yeah. So, where he, go ahead, Tyler.
I was just gonna say, this is the area where I was really wanting some discussion about what we want to include in that. List of essentially always off limits.
It's, it's, which one, which?
Oh, three, oh, it's on top of page two.
Okay.
Then with section B.
Up top of page five. It's page, look at, go to the bottom page numbers and check.
Five of the packets.
Five in the packet, two, yeah, okay, oh, three, oh, okay.
So we can't have places where it's never, never allowed.
Like what you're saying here, view from West Main Street. Or East Main Street, so basically what you're saying there is just mainly just the core of the town. But if they wanted to, they could go park in front of Shirley's house for twenty-four hours, is that right?
Yeah, and this is a, this is a great piece of the discussion right here, because if you guys understand this, you guys can easily make the Carlton version of this that is reasonable. And it's really hard for Tyler and I to do that for you, because this is. You start with this template, but you gotta fit it into the Carlton mold, so if you're looking at that same one, that oh, three, oh. Look at A. It is unlawful at all times for any person to camp upon city property. But remember how we define camping, it doesn't trigger to illegal camping until they've been there for twenty-four hours. So you have a reasonable time limitation there, it, you, you've given them time to rest, you've given them time to sleep, but you're not allowing them to camp. That's where that definition comes in.
It's possible to make it. Off limits to the complete town except, let's say, lower park for twenty-four hours.
Yes, there are other concerns with doing that, and I imagine that because of when his hand goes up, I think we'll get there too. Councillor, what's your question?
Uh, you can fit, you can answer that first, and I'll get you back on.
So, yes, I have a city where I'm really struggling with one planning commissioner guy, because he's working off this same framework. And what yours, what Tyler's got for you on B, he has got a list that essentially excludes everywhere all the time, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, he's just done it in chunks. So you get to the bottom of it and you say, okay, what's left, he's like, nothing really, that's kind of the point.
Well, no, I'm just, just curious if that's, if, I'm, I'm just trying to figure this out, like everyone else, I.
We, we can have more. Listed on there, but we're needing to balance. Do we want essentially this corner of Carlton to be homeless camp central, because we have permanently prohibited them from being anywhere else? That, you know, causes its own set of issues, so it's really balancing. What our concerns are for where people are gonna be, which is why I included essentially like the core of town and what you can see from the core of town. And then Erin and I need input about what else is.
Use an example of my street, Grand Street right there, in this part of town, aside from the new subdivisions, Carl, that Carlton, as you know, I mean, parking is only. Pretty much in the front of houses, so if you allow, you know, for instance, camping on me, on Grand Street. You're theoretically taking away parking spot for a resident and access to their home, so I mean, I think we need to consider that in terms of prohibiting that.
And I think to councillor Erickson's question too, the question you gave me, I gave you the opposite example, the question you asked was, well, can we just make it the park? You know, because that'd be the only place. You could, and what Tyler's referring to, you create these other issues, is the main one is called the state created danger issue. Where you generally as a city do not have an obligation to care for the safety of your citizens. But the exception to that rule is when you leave someone in a worse place than you found them. And if you say the only place you can be is this field here across the street, that's the spot where we're gonna allow sleep and resting and camping essentially. There's a much stronger argument that you made me be there and everything bad that happens there is now somehow can be pointed back to the city. There's an overdose, there's an assault, there's a raid, there's a whatever, bad thing happens there, once it becomes a congregant area. And that's still the only lawful place they could go at night, creates those other issues, and I think they're worth. Not doing that. That is why that is not been my recommendation to anybody is to do that. The other thing that happens when you do start designating certain locations and saying like, this is where we'd really prefer you to be. Is the arguments for and the letters that come from the Oregon Law Center and the ACLU start demanding, and it sounds totally reasonable, once you do that. You know, uh, water bodies, wash facilities, garbage services.
You're turning it into a campground, so you have to have all that stuff there, yeah.
I've seen it actually play out, interestingly, lot of movement, lot of public activity, lot of stuff, all they're, we're not asking for anything. Other than just a spot, there's this spot, we really like that spot, just, just let us stay there, and as soon as they do. Then that same activity is then converted to, and you can actually find these like, I call them playbooks. That are openly published on the web from advocacy groups that basically say this is kind of how you, that. How, how you can maximize that political activity essentially. Yes, councillor.
So, couple of questions for you, so can the park still legally be closed at night?
Yes.
So that is a thing?
Yes.
That doesn't contradict with twenty-four hours?
No.
So can you say the person is sleeping right now at dusk, can they be removed from the park because the park closes at night?
You could do that, yes.
Second thing is, I know it's all hypothetical, but, um, I, I'm getting nervous about talk about the park. I mean, in my mind, that is the most advantageous place for people to do the activities we're talking about, people aren't gonna wanna be downtown Carlton, where there's. Three feet of space to erect a tent.
I could see him in the, I could see him in the.
Upper park.
In the upper park, and so that's why I get nervous about parks, I mean, I see it every day where at Joe Dancer Park.
Yeah, yeah.
Playing, kids are doing activities, and it's a dangerous situation. My second question is, is there any considerations for ADA issues? So say somebody does erect a tent in the middle of a, a business downtown, we now have ADA compliance. Is, is there anything that allows us to say you can't put your tent here because you're obstructing ADA access to businesses?
The Oregonian, don't you?
I do not.
I joke that because the city of Portland is essentially ten years ahead of everybody else on this stuff, they've been experimenting with this, and some of it voluntarily, some of it through litigation for like. Actually, I'd say more than that, I'd say like twenty years, I'm forty-one, I grew up on the Vancouver side of the water, but we'd hang out in Portland, and when I was a kid. The sidewalks in Portland were completely clear.
Yeah.
But there was even back then a pretty healthy homeless population underneath the overpasses and in a lot of the wide open green space. That was by design, that was by ordinance, at that time, they banned you from erecting a tent of any kind on the sidewalks. And then as the green spaces turned brown and people stopped using them to play frisbee and walk their dog, and there was more and more activity around that, complaints around that. They changed the law, then they allowed congregate camping of up to so many tents together on the sidewalks and banned it on all the green space. And then it switched, and you saw the, you saw it change, and now that's still basically what's in place there now. The real problem, problem slash question that arises about can you ban it on your parks? And still do it overall reasonably, absolutely. But you're gonna have to be clear about what else you're giving up and where you're allowing that activity to take place. The other question that's not really as clean, and I don't, I wish I had a better answer for you, is the law now requires seventy-two hours. Of prior notice before you could remove their stuff. That is separate, that is a separate process from them being in violation. So. You have an individual that parks up in your camp, that throws up a camp in your park. And after twenty-four hours, it's illegal. So you are fully capable of writing a citation on hour twenty-five. Lawfully, you still don't have the ability to remove their, or their property from that spot. That still requires another seventy-two hours of notice. This was, this was the other change, this one's already in effect, this one doesn't come into effect in July, it's already in effect. It's always been twenty-four hours, and that got modified from twenty-four to seventy-two. There's currently a House bill, actually, I think it's a Senate bill, that would move it back to twenty-four hours, but it doesn't look to be getting a whole lot of traction. So you still have. A four-day window. Right, even as to that person? Um, if you had it so that it was, um, what's hard is like in your park. Obviously sleeping and resting during the, in the park during the day. No harm, no foul, it's not like you're gonna say, back to your question, it's not like you're gonna say, well, everyone else can sleep in the park, but if you're homeless, you can't. So of course they can sleep in there during the day, and you can certainly do a sweep at night and, you know, tell everybody move along and. Be sure that there's other places for them to go, if that's not where you want them to be, and you may prevent this kind of seventy-two hour window from even happening in the first place. But, I mean, do you guys have twenty-four seven coverage of law enforcement even? Man, it's a tough task, even if, even if you did, you know, they're likely on another call at dusk. And it becomes a, just practically speaking, a tough thing to do. And it becomes a, just practically speaking, a tough thing to do. I was actually a police officer for before going to law school. It's one of the reasons I ended up with this twenty-four hour window is just those practical considerations of it. And then even as reasonable as all that sounds, it's still not foolproof. You may still get sued. I wish I could tell you that there's a right answer or some magical fix and I don't have it. Sit, I, I've consulted with probably more than a dozen, couple dozen cities on this issue. The city of Ben, I wasn't consulting with them, did a very similar set of changes within the last couple of weeks. Where it was, you must move every twenty-four hours and they had very specific, has to be this far, um, and within hours of passage, got a letter from the ACLU saying that it was, uh, unlawful. It was a cruel and unusual punishment and basically we're gonna sue you. You gotta do something more, less restrictive. So it's still not, it's not, there is no foolproof. There's a lot of ways that they can attack this. Go ahead, counselor.
Question, uh, the law that's being implemented, implemented July first here in Oregon, are there similar laws about to be passed in other states? Or is Oregon rather unique?
Ours is pretty unique. They, uh, the one that I said died today has been passed in other states. A version of that has been passed in other states. The, what happened in twenty-twenty-one was the same Oregon Law Center that Sue and Grants Pass has a lobbying arm. And there were a lot of things going on in the Grants Pass litigation. They wanted to codify. So then it would move some of our arguments. And that's what created some of this. Um, alongside that was this right to rest act. And they, they don't really jive together really well. So at the time in twenty-twenty-one, the legislature picked the ones we're talking about now, got rid of the right to rest act. Fast forward two more years, it came up again and got hooplaed on today. It got shut down as.
You said it's worse.
Yeah, there's like four states that pass it. I, I categorize it as worse. I mean, it's, it's more restrictive. It's far more restrictive. It actually gives someone the right to rest on public property. And then rest is defined as to rest or remain indefinitely. And if you move them, you have the obligation to provide them in the near vicinity, a uh, place to rest again without a time limitation to it.
What states are, have implemented this?
Connecticut, actually, I can tell you very quickly because I'm teaching on a national conference on this. I just looked at it. If I had internet, do I have internet in here?
While you're looking that up, can I ask another question?
Please.
You, I get what you're saying with the, um, removing seventy-two hours, but again, back to my example of do there, the rights of the houseless supersede a rights of an ADA individual? So how does, so that's, so any paraphernalia that's in downtown? Can it be removed immediately versus waiting seventy-two hours because it's restricting access?
Probably not, but it's also probably separate conduct from this. So is it immediately citable? Yes. And could you move it immediately to ensure that somebody in a wheelchair could get by? Yes, but I would not recommend immediate removal. Meaning you take it all, take it to the shops or wherever you guys store seized property and store it. That's, that's really the distinction there. And you're correct. That's why, and I appreciate you bringing it back up because now now Portland is being sued for ADA violations for allowing their sidewalks to become to where people are having to go on the road in their wheelchairs to get around the camps that are taking up the sidewalks. And they're gonna lose that lawsuit too. Um, and it's gonna create the anvil hitting them from the other side of like, well, now you've told us, you, you allow it. By ordinance, you allow us to be on the sidewalks. Now you're telling us it can't be. So can you just restrict it by size? Can you make it so that you can be in these certain locations, but under no circumstances? Can you do anything to interfere with pedestrian or vehicular traffic? Absolutely, yeah. And all other conduct, that's why I'm saying that's other conduct. That has nothing to do with your ability to sleep or rest if you're taking up a whole sidewalk, right? Should we be as clear about that as possible in our ordinances? Yes. But all other conduct is still on the table. So it, drugs are also now a violation, but there are other conduct, right? Um, the accumulation of trash is still littering. It's still littering. You don't get a pass on any of that. That's, and that's really where we s- we say these words and the imagery that comes to mind is all of the things, but really what we're talking about is sleeping, resting. And then where is that transit to illegal camping, right?
So they, so basically you're, okay, I think I'm getting it now that they can rest, they can sleep. But if they start cooking.
Yeah.
There's a problem.
Well, and other condom.
Or.
Doesn't have anything to do with those things that you can ban open flame twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. That is not coming. Um, and very weird, but interesting element of this is in the Grants Pass litigation and is not touched by any of this, is not messed with with any of this. The judge that said you, Grants Pass can't enforce these laws because they prohibit somebody from doing a human act of sleeping or resting. You don't, haven't provided them enough space to do that. That was his logic. This is a human thing that people must do. They don't have the ability to, uh, not do it. And you haven't provided the facilities for them to lawfully do it, so you can't enforce this. Says within the same few paragraphs, that within the quote-unquote toolbox, the cities do have are littering, defecating in public, those types of other things, but I don't understand the logic. I don't understand how that logic is any different. If you haven't provided a bathroom and we still all have to defecate, then how is that? But as a question, not really being asked and answered right now by anybody. Um, so for now, this, that stuff remains in place. And I only bring that up because again, you start talking about this and the imagery that you're talking about. We gotta cook.
Yeah.
But huge portions of this state are very concerned about an open flame. You know, would make it a felony if they could because they don't want the whole community to burn to the ground, right? And so that is one of these questions that comes up a lot, and yet that is the other type of conduct. Um, and the answer to the other states is Rhode Island, Connecticut and Illinois have all passed some version of what's either referred to as the Right to Rest Act or the Homeless Bill of Rights. Um, both these are the model legislation are being, um, circulated and advocated for lobbied. I guess would be the right name by a group called WAP with a W at the beginning, WAP. Um, is the one in there, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight other state, nine other states out there will find that have at least introduced it in their legislatures, so.
I have a question, um, signs, do we need to have some type of signs for like showing where those locations are? Like easily visible to the public?
There is not an express requirement for signs.
Okay.
Um, there are a lot of communities doing this, like we're not gonna tell you where to go. We're just gonna tell you the few places you absolutely can't go.
Okay.
Right? And once they do that, which is lawful, I, I've been advocating and telling city councils and everybody else, do your cops a favor. Like, answer the question for them at least. Because a lot of places have body cams now, even if they don't, everybody else has cell phones. And it puts them in a terrible spot if they don't know the answer to, well, where can I go? You don't have to put it in the ordinance. You can do it by negative, right? You just cannot twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five be in these places. Other than that, pick your spot. It doesn't become illegal for twenty-four hours. Okay, you can do that. And that's fine, but I would, I would strongly recommend at least having those trainings internally with your police. They'll have them all know the answer to the follow-up question, the obvious follow-up question. So that they don't get recorded saying, I don't know, don't care, just can't be here, right?
Or to the, with the city limits. We have the, like the downtown Carlton, we have outside of Carlton where the police. I s- I, I think the police doesn't operate outside the city, right? Like the, the downtown city.
They will assist on call outside the city if need be.
But that would be, um, hell.
These ordinances don't apply to outside of city limits.
So are we talking just, so are we talking the whole, like the small town of Carlton? Or are we talking the whole area of the city of Carlton? Could we like sending someone to like a, a very different part of the city where no one goes, but it's very hard to reach, wouldn't make any sense, right? So it's like, I, I don't know what I'm trying to ask, but I guess we are talking just the city where we have the parks and we have all the.
Yeah.
Within the city limits.
City limits is all that's gonna apply to the, the one question that has come up and it's gotten spun really awfully in some of the litigation, even some of the stuff I've been involved in is I've been a representative city that compassionately have been like, do you have somebody that you could stay with? Yeah, but I don't have money for a bus ticket. They give them the money for a bus ticket and they go to their family and they stay there. And then it gets in the litigation, it's like, well, you're mean and awful. You're just trying to send people out of town or like, you said they had family that loved them that would take them in, so we gave them a bus ticket. And it's really unfortunate. Um, similarly, it's like, well, there's a resource, but it's not within our city limits. It's down the street, so we gave them a ride to that other resource. See, you're just running people out of town. And from my little perch in litigation, I'm totally fine defending those actions. The only thing that can get you in trouble there is the town.
Yeah.
If you do it compassionately and for the right reasons, I have no problem defending those actions, even though you're technically taking someone in your town and taking them out of your town, totally fine. But if it's not done compassionally, if it is just, you know, there is this aura of just get out of my town, well, that is different, right? That's fundamentally different. Counselor Skipper?
Yeah, so a couple of questions on eight point, point zero, one, zero under camp facilities. I see motor vehicles. I don't see like travel trailers that are, are those classified in a different way? Um.
Very astute question. Thank you for it. I would, I didn't see some of the other things that I would expect with that definition there. So it was one of the things I wanted to follow up with Tyler and with you guys about. I would probably recommend taking motor vehicles completely out of this entirely. And having those that sleep in their vehicles subject to whatever other parking regulations you guys have. I don't know what those are. I have not reviewed those. So you may not have enough to cover yourself or what you want to be able to move somebody along. And the risk there is just like selective enforcement, right? Somebody comes through a nice shiny thing and they don't get enforced. Somebody comes through in a dumpy thing and people are obviously living in and now they're, they're, we're on them right away about those things. Is the risk there? But I don't think you have to treat a motor vehicle just like you do a tent. Think you can continue to enforce those by the parking violations or the whatever those things could be.
And that's what I was gonna suggest is what are our current parking limitations, you know, and, and this is just throwing this out there, but is there a seven to five restriction in certain areas? You know what I mean? That
Yeah.
You know, something like that, that we could look at. Um. Yeah, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Um, and then another way to kind of protect yourself and then just from a documentation perspective on that is, um, like for a lot of places, I live in suburbias Salem, South Salem. I don't know what the parking regulations are, but there are people in our neighborhood that have teenagers, so they have a car on the sidewalk every single night. And one neighbor's got a car that'll fly tired, probably been sitting there for a while. But nobody's calling. It's not in anybody's way. And so I'm confident the city of Salem just does those calls based on complaint. It is complaint driven. That is okay. You can do that, especially when you have limited resources, is okay to do things in a complaint-driven manner. Just document it, Will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If that's what we're doing, then let's, I would really love to be able to call the city manager when you get sued and say, hey, can I get the documentation that helps me out with this, this complaint driven? I would love for her to know which file cabinet to look in or whatever to go find it for me.
My concern is, we were talking about how the city responds to, you know, folks camping, et cetera, and trying to, you know, implement regulations. My concern is, uh, if, you know, and I hope this never happens, there's an influx of homeless folks here in Carlton. What that, it has a potential being a bit of a powder keg, I think, between that and, and the residents who are literally a few feet away from where they would be. Which I find different than Portland, you know, when I've been up there. You know, I've seen the tents, but most of them I've seen have been kind of more around business areas and not out in the residences.
Do you have, do you have individuals like sleeping in tents and in this town? Like right now, if I went and drove around, could I find somebody sleeping in a tent tonight?
No, I would say just no.
But rarely you will find an individual in town or around town that a rare instance of sleeping in a vehicle.
Okay.
So, and that's usually overnight and then they disappear by morning.
And those, I mean, we're not timeout like Clark Griswold's brother that shows up and just stays in an RV outside somebody's house. You're talking about somebody actually transient that just sleeps in their car occasionally.
Oh, but I could see that happening down here. I mean.
Yeah.
With vehicles and RVs and there's plenty of space in that park.
So there's, there's two, there's two things that are worth saying out loud in relation to this. One is without an acute problem right now, which you do not have. That's not what you're describing at all. It, you can substantially decrease your target for being sued by being less restrictive going into July first. And you are not locked into anything after that. So like Ben, they got a few newspapers, they got a lot of activity, they got a higher population, they have some problem areas with this stuff. They've, they've got attention on them right now and they're doing a similar twenty-four hour thing. And so don't make yourself the target for twenty-four hour, the twenty-four hour limit. You know, it may be a reason to just go uncomfortably more expansive than even you would be normally comfortable with. Let somebody else get sued. When they win and you say, okay, twenty-four hours is reasonable. What they did is reasonable. You reconvene and say, is that something that we wanna do too? Ours is even more loose than that. And you come back down to twenty-four hours, but you didn't have to bear the brunt of that initial thing. Financially, why that might be a wise move is currently your CIS coverage does not cover that type of lawsuit. It's an injunctive relief case. Intentionally, it's an injunctive relief case with attorney's fees to the plaintiff only. If you win, they owe you nothing. If they win, you owe them somewhere between three and five hundred bucks an hour. That they spent on your case and you have to hire defense counsel at a couple hundred bucks an hour or two for the whole thing. So there, where I said earlier, one of you asked like, who was it that's gonna sue you? I said, Oregon Law Center put in some resources, but those are big incentives. That's a big incentive for a local criminal defense attorney that doesn't really normally do civil work to say, oh, challenge it. I, I can challenge. This is unreasonable. Why not? I'll try it. So there's not a lot of risk and there is some reward built into the way that it is. I think CIS will be addressing that. But my understanding is that right now, because it's an injunctive relief case, not a tort claim, it would not be covered. Then we've been zones. Yes. One of the other options that's on there, I I still like the general idea of what Tyler's got drawn up for you right now. Better than this, but it's like, um, the overall just has to be reasonable. So I think Roseburg is the first one I saw kind of doing this. They've said what they're working towards is it will be, you can sleep and rest in the parks during the day. And then there's this area right next to City Hall that is the place that you can sleep and rest and set your stuff up at night. But the place that's okay at night is not okay during the day, it's off limits twenty-four all day to everybody during the day. And then parks are the parks during the day, you use it just like everybody else. And if you need a place to sleep, you gotta come back here. And so they move back and you'd have to move back and forth to comply every single day during the day.
You think that'll be challenged?
The this, nothing's in in force yet, um, until July. This whole law doesn't even come into effect, their ability to sue you over it, whether or not it's reasonable or not, doesn't come into effect until July. They probably will be challenged, I mean, they are providing on the nighttime spot, they are providing porter bodies in a wash station and the garbage services, like we talked before, they're kind of recognizing, okay, we're gonna tell you to be here, we'll provide the facilities, but.
Um, are schools treated differently in this or how does that? At schools inside city limits?
You're good.
I work with electricity, actually. But I work at McMinville Water Night.
I have to give you all like stereotype lawyer answers of it depends every time you're asking a good question. It depends because some of the city, some cities own their school properties. Most cities do not because they operate in school districts which are distinct with their own property. And so I don't know for your schools, I don't know if you own the property or not.
The schools, I think the school district.
District is a separate and distinct, most likely, I don't know exactly, I haven't read their their stuff, but they are likely a separate and distinct uh what we call municipal corporation, yeah.
So the fire department would be the same thing.
Fire department's property would be the same thing, correct. Um, and this isn't a really unfortunate byproduct of, these types of questions are like a kind of unfortunate byproduct of this uh that I've seen happen over the course of like five years, wh- when, before this all happened. Even when I was doing police work, we policed underneath overpasses. Without question, nobody even thought twice about it. But as soon as all of this stuff started happening, it was like, well, we're gonna have to give up somewhere. That's ODOT property, I ain't touching it. You know what I mean? That's that's BNSF, I ain't going down by the railroad anymore. If they wanna stay down there, that's BNSF's problem, that's ODOT's problem, that's whatever, that's somebody else's problem. Um, and I think that goes to what Counselor Skipper is asking about, like, about the fire department. Um, you could define it, public property is public property, whether it's city-owned property or not. But for those reasons, I'm discussing most place, most, most jurisdictions are defining it as the public property we're talking about here, the city-owned property. If it's somebody else's property that happens to be a public entity in our city, that's on them, they gotta figure it out. They can treat it like private property essentially at that point.
So we have a section through our town right now that is owned by the county that goes right through the town. What do we do with that?
You can probably do one of two things, you could define it so that it was still a violation because it's in the city limits and it's on public property, if you wanna take on the that. You know, this is the underpass ODOT thing, right? You could define it in a way that we could enforce it if we chose to. Or you could define it as, what we're talking about here is just the stuff that we maintain and we own or we lease. And if we don't own it or maintain it or lease it, we're not gonna police it either.
And that is currently how we have it defined. We use that, we use the language city property instead of public property. Not that it changes, but it just kind of clarifies a little bit, just on the face of it.
I do have one concern, if we do not police that area that's being talked about, we could have some potentially very unhappy uh residents.
Is that would be the natural landing spot probably, or some of that stretch would be a natural landing spot?
I could see if they found it, yeah. Yeah, uh it's lots of trees, there's nobody there, it's.
Yeah.
It's an old railroad right away, yeah, so it's nice, nice broad.
Yeah, are you guys going into regular session at seven?
Yeah, seven thirty soon.
Okay, well. Uh, I'm gonna burn through a couple of my other concerns, just to give everybody an opportunity to raise any questions. With the intent of, once we break from this, I'll just say what it is, say what my concern is, give us a few minutes and handle any questions about it. So that Tyler can get some guidance on finalizing it up and getting you something that you can get placed by July. I wanna make sure we get at least there by seven thirty, right? Eight, one, four, oh, four, oh, it's on page two of mine, but I think it would be page four of yours.
Depends on if you look at the top or the bottom.
The bottom is two of three.
That's right.
Um, oh, four, oh, sub A. The clause of scheduled on an as-needed basis by the chief of police, I would recommend removing. Um, I think that it's, I think that as-needed portion of that is the piece that gives me concern because we're not really defining what is as-needed. And I think we're okay just delegating that authority to make those decisions. You can certainly run it up the chain, but.
He's scheduled by the chief of police.
Yeah, the scheduled on an as, the as-needed basis is the part that gives me a little pause. I think we should tinker with that and probably remove it because we're not really deciding what is as-needed. About if it's a violation, we have the right to do it. Period. And if we choose to do it, then we're within our rights to do it. Um, now I'm going from two into three. I don't think we can do sub one. Um, which is conditions with certain sanitary is fine, but the uh cause of offensive odors. I don't think we can do that part. Such that an immediate threat to public health exists is is in the statute, but it's actually the language that Tyler's got into. So I'm I'm probably working with Tyler to clean those two up. And what I really am concerned about there is just the, I don't think the cause of offensive odors is not enough for us to immediately remove it without providing the notice.
That's a little subjective.
Yeah, well, and I would, I wish it was a little less, but that's that language in two right below that, conditions constituting an septial emergency, including but not limited to site contamination by hazardous materials or other immediate danger to the human life or safety, that's really the only out the statute gives you. And that language is directly for there, so going, going any looser than that without notice is problematic. What the sub E, the weapons, drug paraphernalia and other items which reasonably appear to be either stolen or evidence of your crime may be retained by the police department. This is language from the statute. I don't necessarily, it's legally wrong, but I would delete it for only the reason that this is other conduct. This is stuff the cops can do completely irrespective of whether or not you change your stuff.
It's not necessarily specifically applicable to this.
Because it's stuff that this legislature has added to this other, this other stuff that we're dealing with here eh as well. But I think it's just unnecessary. I think if they find drugs or or evidence of a crime, then they are already guided by a fourth amendment principles to do what they gotta do.
Um, number one, but you know, you took those, that language out you were discussing. Could you rather say conditions that create an immediate threat to public health?
Agreed, and but once you do that, you basically just eliminate it and rely on what we already have in two. And what's already in two is straight from the statute.
So essentially a safer way to get the same.
Result, yeah, would be to just take one out probably and rely on two and three there.
Well, I guess you said garbage is a whole separate thing anyway, right?
Yeah, you can still regulate all that, completely independent of this.
All right. So take one out completely and just do two and three.
Yeah. And then, um, the last one I had highlighted to address is three, oh no, I'm sorry, oh, seven, oh, three, the on the last page, three of three. The way you guys have this set up is that it ramps up from a fine of one fifty to a fine of three hundred to a fine of three hundred and imprisonment for not exceed thirty days, which makes it a misdemeanor. This may be theoretically still possible, even under all of our stuff, to do it this way. But for your guys' situation, I would not recommend this. You guys do not have an acute problem, you do not have a big target on your back. And this is an extremely big target increaser. This was an issue in the grants, is an ongoing issue in the Grants Pass case. Once you do some of this stuff, it it, this is one of those things when July first comes around and they're auditing it, this will be one of the things that. Do you, can we ever be arrested for it? If so, put them on our target list, right? So let somebody else get that challenge, there are other places with much more activity around them than Carlton that are gonna push that envelope, I would probably let one of them get sued. And maybe Tyler will keep his pulse on those challenges and changes and then when or if somebody defeats it or loses to it, report back and say, either we wanna reconsider, right? Um, so I would probably just take three out. And then the only other thing on that one is, I really like what is there in C? So do you uh, what is, where are your municipal code violations prosecuted? Are they with Yam Hill County or are they with, do you have a municipal court? Okay. Um, I really like here where in sub C, there's been some discretion given to the Muni Court Judge to reduce a violation to to zero even if they meaningfully engage with some kind of social service provider. You know, it's, it's one of these things that allows you and your police department to create a record times when you are interacting with somebody and they're given every opportunity to engage with social services and may help them get off the street and they don't do it. And and you have a record now that you had the opportunity and an incentive to do it, you still didn't do it. Or they're doing their part and they're engaging, right? And then they're getting a benefit for engaging, I like that. Um, I'd probably add that the the language there in one and two is that the fines shall not not to exceed. I think that inherently gives your Muni Court Judge the discretion to reduce it as they see fit. But again, just as a target reducer, I might include express language about giving that discretion to the judge.
What I'm trying to figure out, excuse me, it how, how do these people, how, how can we levy a monetary fine against them? Do they have that? I mean, they don't have the money.
And I'm, I don't, I mean, you don't have much of the problem here, so maybe they they don't, but it's really frustrating for these officers because you've taken the ability to arrest them away. And then they know they're never gonna pay the fine.
Yeah.
So they're lit, you'll, you may write them a ticket and they just crumple it up and throw it on the ground and say, I'm never gonna pay it, I'm not gonna do anything.
What are you gonna do? To, you know, take my welfare check or?
And then the.
If you have, even have one?
So, so the, but that's why you'd have to still have the enforcement piece in place because at some point, that person, you still have to have the ability to remove their property. You know, and that really becomes the only way to.
So that gives you the leverage to do that.
Have the ability to remove them from that location is once you go through that process and you can remove them and their property from location. They've, some of this stuff makes that pretty burdensome too, you gotta store their property, it's gotta be in the same vicinity, it's gotta they basically have to be provided a number where they can come back and pick it up. Um, depending on the community, um, they have the resources to go get another tent and the stuff they lost, they may not care and they may be right back there again. But those are not Carlton's issues in twenty twenty-three right now, so I, again, for you, get yourself to compliance and then it's uncomfortable, I don't have, I don't have the right answer, I don't have the magic wand. Tyler's not gonna give you something that you got everybody's like excited about, right? So I would, I would say for where you're at, my understanding of what is the current state of the activity that was affected by this stuff? Be uh, be comfortable in the uncomfortable for now. Let the rest of this stuff lay out.
Get along those lines, and you may not know this, but I'm just curious if, you know, the uh number of homeless or folks camping, is that number is increasing year over year in the last three to five years?
Gosh, you guys don't have some of the problems that the bigger places do, but there is a filled it and they shall come effect.
That's what I'm concerned about this law that's going into, but it's like, they sign what organs open for business.
You know, and and honestly, though, some of the things that drive that are the um independent nonprofit service providers more than what the government's providing. Um, that drive that where they can get free socks and meals and when there's a robust, you know, other activity around that, there, those are the places that tend to attract it. Last time they did this count, it was like less than forty percent of the homeless in Portland were from Portland. Or from Oregon. Um, so there's that, some of that is probably driven by our lax drug laws though too. Oh, like some of that has increased just since we passed one ten a few years ago. And we don't really talk about these things in conjunction a whole lot. So, um.
I think the West Coast states also encourage it just because the weather is better than
Yeah.
other areas.
I I told you, I referenced this PowerPoint that I'm putting together for this national conference I'm teaching at on this, and that's essentially how I describe it. Raise your hand if you're in the ninth circuit. And if you are, you're in the Petri dish. You know, the rest of you are in the lab getting to watch the experiment, girl. You know, and that's essentially where we're at. Similarly with Rhode Island and Connecticut and Illinois that have passed that right to rest bill. They're the Petri dish on that one, you know, and the rest, everybody else is kind of watching the experiment, seeing what happens to it. Yeah, but it can be done very reasonably. But you're kind of stuck having to give up something. A little different.
Trying to keep our heads down.
Yeah. There's gonna be a flurry of activity and I highly doubt that Carlton will be part of it unless you guys go totally sideways from where we're at right now. Between this and final passage, unless you go completely a different direction, I highly doubt that that would be one of the initial targets.
We have been very, very fortunate up until now. And there are no services of available at this point, um, so that makes it a little bit.
It's not very attractive for.
Yeah, McMinville and Newburgh have service areas and I recently was told of of them homeless migration ranging around seven o'clock in the morning and seven o'clock at night, I guess that's when someplace opens or closes, but. It's all centered, uh centered around, um, who has the resources to provide for these people.
And it's, it's unfortunate because those resources don't fix the issue we're talking about.
Yeah.
Right? Because even if you had, like the ledger I talked about at the beginning from those other cases. Even if you had a thousand beds in this community. There's gonna be people that for very good reasons cannot or will not use those facilities. And you still need, they still need to sleep. So you still gotta regulate, okay, well, what do we do with the guy that's got a disease? So he can't go in there or the guy that has a restraining order against somebody that already is in there. And so they legitimately, lawfully can't go stay in your thousand bed shelter with nine hundred ninety-eight empty beds in it. Like he still needs to sleep somewhere. You still gotta regulate him. And so the resources don't fix this issue. And that's, that's been one of the hard things. I, I actually have a really good working professional relationship with the guys I've been litigating against this for years and called them up and just said, hey, I come in peace. I just wanna listen. Like, what do you think will really fix this thing? And he, he came, he's the head of the litigation department for the legal or Oregon Law Center. And he brought, um, one of the guys that was heading one of the homeless advocacy group, like homeless czar guys that was running that. And they would not come off that post of just like, keep building free housing. They say affordable, but if you don't have any money, like what's affordable? So keep building free housing and you can like build housing your way out of this. You've not done police work.
Yeah.
I've finished and smelled this stuff and then some of the there that will help. There is an element of this that that would definitely help get them on the street and they may very well transition back to being really productive members of society. But there is another huge portion of that that have no interest in any of that, so. But that's where we're at. Carlton.
Somebody just did something good.
The game's probably over, so that's all the parrots.
Maybe else I can answer questions while I'm here.
Anybody else?
I think, um, just to kind of point out. So I, I won't name where it is, but I've talked about it multiple times. I think they do it backwards, in my opinion. And so the, the shuffling that you talk about, so it's the parks are open during the daytime. And then you can be on the public streets in the evening time. And it really creates a conflict with activities like this when there's camping and things happening and activities when other activities for the parks are being used for. So I really wanna, in my opinion, we need to carefully think about parks and spaces like that and how that's worded because that's my fear. I don't, I don't think downtown Carlton is gonna get inundated with some of this activity. I think it's gonna be these little pockets that are targeted.
And if that's, if that becomes the priority, then then perhaps you take the parks off the table twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five for that or you know, at night or after this time or whatever the case may be, and then just leave old part of downtown as the options. Again, the, the end result just needs to be reasonable. Um, and so the more you're taking off the table that are the I don't know, kind of low hanging fruit, the places that if you're just cruising through town, those would be your obvious choices to pick, you know, I'd probably search the parks, go there first. If those are the ones you're gonna take off the list, just, just counterbalance those with something so that you can help your cops out, help yourselves out by having an overall reasonable approach. It's it's gonna end up with places that you're on paper, somebody could go planned for up to twenty-four hours lawfully that you probably don't want them to be if you were picking.
Yeah, I keep thinking about the downtown, the Upper Park and downtown because I can see that folks coming into town and that's like right in the center of town. It's one of the first things you see. I could see somebody going, oh, look. Now, it's, it's attractive. There's places to camp over there. There's plenty of room. So that's, we don't have that issue now, but I can see that turning into that.
The other thing, and I know Chief's, she's still on there.
Yes, he is.
The other thing, I, I highly recommend electives do for their police departments as part of this process is to review what resources are available in your area. Even if your jurisdiction doesn't have them. Um, do a refresh of what those are. Perhaps put a little kitty money somewhere if they don't have it already where they could, they come across the sympathetic mom that needs a place for the night because she's running from a DV instance or something like you know, refresh those things. Take a look at them and you know, so that they can turn into a little car or whatever. If they do come across it, something these guys can throw in their duty bag and hand out when they're winter, if they come across it, and then just make that the standard practice. You come across them, give them the resources. Then when you do get sued or somebody does sue you, there's another thing that we have, the policy is a hundred percent of the time. We contact these folks, we're giving them what limited resources that we have in the area. You know, we have the options to do expiry if we can. I mean, that's all we got. Those are our resources.
We don't usually do this, but Chief Martinez, do you have any questions that you would like or comments that you'd like to make?
No, actually what he just touched on was exactly what, um, uh, I was, I was thinking about at the beginning of this and, uh, even though we have
Audio issue. Christie's computer, so.
Oh, you can hear through Christie's computer? Oh, test our speaker, maybe it shut itself off.
We're working at it, chief.
Alright.
There's a green light on the
No.
Okay, chief, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, yeah, I actually touched on something that I was, uh, thinking about at the beginning of this, and that was the fact that we do not have resources. We don't have places that they can readily stay and be taken care of. So if we have those resources and we utilize them, we still are obligated to have something in town. Should they refuse? That, is that correct? Or is that kind of fulfilling that obligation at this point?
Wha- what's that? I'm sorry, you're saying if you offer them somewhere to be, you mean?
Yeah, if we offer, so like, uh, if there's another town that has resources that it can accommodate them for the night and give them a facility and a, and a bed and a place to stay where they have food and, and warmth. Um, does that satisfy it or does it have to have, do we still have to have a designated place in town?
The question you're asking actually takes issues from the Boise case and the Grants Pass case and shuffles them together. What I mean by that is the city of Boise actually has the resources within its jurisdictional limits to house people. And so even now, they sweep their parks every single night and do an individual interview with every person and then say, um, uh, okay, you're, you, you're these demographics. We have a shelter bed for you right now. You wanna go? And when they say no, they take enforcement action right then. However, in the Grants Pass case, they came to the conclusion that if it wasn't in your jurisdictional boundary, it doesn't count for you. So you wouldn't have that option. Yeah, when they're talking about shelter in that context, they're actually talking about something with a roof. They're not talking about another place to put a tent down. Right, so no, I think that you could still be in a place where you can lawfully tell someone like, like when you guys take parks off limit at night, you could lawfully tell someone, hey, you gotta leave. There's places you can stay in this town, but it's not here. But when they tell you pound sand, um, your options are pretty limited. I mean, you're really just gonna be enforcing your stuff and depending on how the final version of this comes out, you may not be taking enforcement action even then until the next day. Does that answer your question, chief?
It does, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
So right now, we couldn't partner with other cities, like the whole county have a program where people have to go to McMinville or something like that. That is not allowed under the current circumstances.
You can. I mean, it's interesting that this, this like jurisdictional boundary issue is an interesting one because it doesn't prevent you. And I wouldn't say it should incentivize you not to continue to do those other resources and invest in other things that may actually help people get off the street. I think it shouldn't disincentivize you, but it isn't a fix for what we're talking about.
And those people do have the option to refuse that hill.
Yeah, and then you can still just have something in place for the person that refuses. You know, like all of the other talk about housing and resources and all of those things, you just have to go, okay, that's this bucket. But everything we're talking about is, okay, well, what about the person that just refuses or doesn't want to or whatever? That's here and is not engaged in those resources. What do, how do we regulate their conduct? How long can they stay? Where can they stay? Where can they be and for how long? You know, those questions still have to be answered for somebody.
Give us a little more option, I think, is more the worst case scenario. You have this place, but you can always offer a better other case then.
Yeah, and that's where it's been hard. I think the messaging on the other side of this, these issues has been really strong and it's really good about trying to really sell this idea that investing in those issues fixes the, that fixes this for everybody or fixes this so that you don't have to do some of these other things. That part's just not true. It may certainly help people and they may be very worthwhile investments, but it doesn't fix this part of it. What do you do with everybody else? Been good?
Good.
Think you guys even get a break before your
Well, I'm just checking, I, Shannon looked like
Yes.
That's what I figured.
What did you?
So, go ahead.
No, yeah, I just, you know, like, where do you guys want or don't want?
Cause that's gonna have to come back to the June meeting in order to be approved by July one.
Uh, yes.
The way that I see it, parks are set up right now is that everyone has to vacate at sunset and they can come back at sunrise. I think that this is a very acceptable. You know, you can go rest wherever else you want, but not here, not there.
So that could be a clause we could add to that, the list of off limits, all, all time twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. There could just be another sub clause or a number three or something that says as to this park and that park sleeping during the day is, is awful, but it's awful at night, whatever type of thing.
Do you think it's safer to steal your target language to not even include a parks reference? In what we're calling our camping ordinance and just rely on essentially our park rules.
Gosh, that's a really good question.
I feel like parks is gonna be one of those keywords like in prison, you know?
Oh, I see what you're, you're saying. So just designated areas are off limits. I think that that, and because that is so
Can't stay in our parks overnight because that's
Yes, other activity that's regulated elsewhere.
Right.
I was actually hearing your question a little differently. I agree with you, like, if you're gonna have a problem, it probably originates in your parks. What I'm hearing from you is you do not have that problem currently.
Yes, we do not have that problem currently.
You don't want to invite it.
Yep.
I totally hear every bit of that. But you're also a small city council that's probably a lot more agile than bigger cities, and so I would I don't know that they're I mean, you're here, you're addressing it. I'd probably go ahead and regulate it, but it's not, I don't know that it's also bad advice to just tell you it decreases your target size so much to just say
We have a few outliers.
And then if you did have a couple people start doing that and it was like, whoa, you know, they're right outside of the home run fence for this baseball game going on behind us. I'm, you know, you can re- reconvene and amend the ordinance pretty quickly. And that and then you're taking on more risk, but for a really good reason. Whereas right now, you're taking on a risk for a reason that doesn't exist yet. You know what I mean?
I, I kind of agree. I think we have that flexibility, you know, to adjust as needed. I, and I just wanted to point to the language that's already there protects, um, the Upper Park because it's within view, correct? Of West Main Street, so it's already prohibited, so that would be covered essentially in then forty-seven. It covers a pretty big area, it feels like.
And this is prohibited by parking laws, so we're covered. You don't have to, we don't have to bring in language that
Yeah.
scares people or
Yeah.
draws attention.
You just also don't wanna create a maze that your chief and his officers don't have the other answer to, right? Again, make, those are the guys gonna get the tough questions. Make it easy as possible on them. Put some clarity, as much clarity as you can there. But I don't, I really don't see you guys having a real huge risk of putting in too many or too few areas. And the problem that doesn't exist is created. Right? I can see you putting in too many areas excluding so much of the city that your target increases for litigation. But I don't think that you can allow it in so many places that people are gonna be like moving to Carlton. Right? I could be wrong on that, but that's my general sense right now, especially without a lot of the other infrastructure resources not being present near you there.
Yeah.
One last little thing, if I may, there, um, can we check with McMinville? Do we know, like, have they already? I believe they've already established an ordinance. I don't know if they're working on changing any ordinance before, before July first. The only reason is because we are a surrounding town of a big problem. We're kind of right in between some things like, so that's where I could see some movement happening. And again, we can adjust, but I just was kind of curious if what they have in place now is what they're gonna stick with on July first.
I don't think that McMinville has done any work on their camping ordinances for a while, but I don't know that they have it in response to House Bill. They're one fifteen.
I haven't worked with them yet.
And I can look at what they have. So we can have a better idea. I think they're a little bit they were a little bit ahead before this all kind of blew up. More permissive.
We need to move along here, so what? Where are we?
You might be, the councilors feel like we need to address the all the time ban locations. I think that's the the big piece that's really a policy question that I can't necessarily answer. And like I said, I I chose that just because it's the visual corridor. That was my thought process. And like Aaron's saying, wanting to be sort of as least restrictive as we can while also got some potential issues.
The only issue I have with it is probably a selfish one because I live on the streets off of that visual corridor and I don't want what could be that to move to my street, you know? So I mean, that's perfect. I mean, that's just a selfish response, but, uh.
My street too.
So we can add a line saying all streets that councilors
Yeah, exactly.
So something that I've seen is, is in other communities and particularly Florida, almost when you cut off the main drag like three blocks out. It was a different world than the main drag. And, um, I, I'm just concerned that, that we're gonna have this beautiful main drag in that areas of, um, but of course we don't have that right now, so.
Right, so yeah.
Cross that bridge when we get there.
I think that that's the right approach.
Yeah.
I think it might be a problem that we just have main streets here and then we, we're gonna last with what residential streets, if they can go to the park because of the time limit. We are just left with a little bit of issue and then we have residents complaining that we have MC the rest. We are just left with a little bit of issue and then we have residents complaining that we have families in the distance, so.
Right.
Uh, that's why I was talking about zones, maybe perhaps we couldn't allow them. Residential zones, but allowed in more public zones and stuff like that. So that's, that's my issue with this. Are we just gonna push people into residential zones?
Well.
Which I think is a, a, a good concern, but again, like councillor Hill's just saying, we don't, we don't have those people that we're pushing out. Right now.
Right. And the odds are in our favor.
One, one way you could do that on the way that he's suggesting is just having it. Off limits twenty-four seven, three sixty-five in residential areas and. Anywhere that you're gonna walk pedestrian or vehicular traffic. So then, like, when the cops do get asked, where can we go? Well, you could be on any sidewalk in the city, essentially. Any non-residential sidewalk, as long as you're not blocking vehicle, you're blocking pedestrian traffic.
It's not like we have a lot of those.
Keep a plot, pretty small footprint, you know? Um, that would still leave the parks. As an option, while you don't have a problem, but that would be easy to adjust if that problem did create. And then, and the overall is very reasonable because it's giving a lot of options, even if they're not the ideal options. Probably citizenry, why would the optics of at least your, if you have to give up something, thanks for not giving up the residential areas, you know?
Before we jump to that being a reasonable option, I would encourage you to look at a zoning map for the city of Carlton.
It's a.
All the yellows residential. That's just our one.
So it's just the core and.
So this is our two, three.
Most of the city.
Yeah.
And we need to wrap this up, folks.
They just, big, no flies or well, no canyon, no marking, no whatever zones. That just puts a big target in the less.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Is everybody okay going with the recommendations that Aaron has made with some language in the draft? Now while maintaining the complete off limits that Tyler had. As comfortable as anyone can be.
Right, yeah.
With homelessness.
Yeah, I think we can, we can adjust, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so it's not a stamped and this is what we have to.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, get this general thing in place.
Right.
Then you guys can certainly adjust.
Watch as other.
What is adjacent, Tyler, what does adjacent to mean? On one, two, and three, adjacent to, oh, we didn't, what's adjacent to?
Next to.
So that would be like side streets lots.
It probably would not cover all of every side street. But it would cover if there was public property, the, the park is actually a good example, although it's also covered out of a. View language that I included. It's city property that is not Main Street, but that is. On Main Street, adjacent to.
Okay, okay.
That was a lot of words we not.
You got it?
So, we have our merchant.
You got it?
I also heard in desire to see if parts of regulations. To see how that would regulate motor vehicles and trainloads and.
Yeah. Alrighty, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Right.
We're supposed to start at seven thirty. I just wanna take a five minute break and stretch your legs.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
See you, man. You can hire me off.
Yeah.
Do you need to stretch your legs, anybody? What a tangled web. Here we going? Okay, today is Tuesday, May the second. We are gathered for the um. May city council meeting of the city of Carlton. Oh, could you read the roll call, please? Here.
Councillor Grant Erickson.
Here.
Councillor Jeremy Randolph.
Here.
Councillor Shirley Lloyd Wood.
Here.
Councillor Kevin Skipper.
Here.
Councillor Davidson Hill.
Here.
Councillor Carolyn Thompson Rising.
Here. Thank you. Please join with me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this.
Alrighty.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
There's one addition, Mayor. I would like to discuss a request from Representative Elmer for getting testimony for state funding request for the city of Carlton.
Do you wanna? Okay, okay. Ceremonies, appointments, and announcements. Do we have anything? No. Citizen comments. This is the section of the agenda that allows members of the public to address the city council on any items on or off of the agenda. When invited, the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, or invited by the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, state their name and street address. And direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. Item A is items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any guests tonight? We do not. Anybody who wants to comment on any items that are on the agenda? Hey, we don't have any comments. Moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Been moved and seconded. Call in favor. I opposed, motion passes. Ordinances, resolutions, discussion on action items.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, uh, in front of you, we have the South Seventh Street update. Uh, we have summarized the inclination that was captured by the two speed signs. For the month of February ninth, March eleventh. Uh, we have also summarized the survey commentary that you received going door to door. Plus the online surveys that were submitted. And, uh, the chief, we also have a summary of the last month's data. And that, uh, has come in and average speed was seven point eight miles per hour. For about eleven thousand vehicles for that month. So that was capturing speed at South Seventh and Wilson Street going northbound at that point in time. We specifically moved it to that location, um, to see about some anomalies that we had identified in the previous speed study. To see and determine their cause. Um, at this time, uh, the chief of police and myself and the public works director have. Come up with a few recommendations, some we've already implemented. But I would like to hand it over to Chief Martinez to go over his, uh, bulleted list about what his recommendations are. And then we can discuss from there.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Council, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, so I just kinda wanted to touch a little bit on the history, uh, basically over the last three months. Uh, we've had the digital split, can you hear me? We're good?
Yeah, we can. We're just turning it up, chief.
I've been multitasking with an investigation that's going on, so. All right, we're good?
Wait, yeah. Okay.
Go ahead, Chief.
All right, thank you. Uh, so the history of South Seventh, I know it's been, uh, an issue, especially with the develop, ongoing development that's going on there. So, you know, as we see the changes and the development, we obviously come across things that are gonna be needing. Uh, a collective mindset to, to address so that we can make that community and that art of Carlton as safe as possible. For the residents, for traffic, and for anybody that negotiates those roadways. Um, and so we've used, uh, digital speed signs, uh, to monitor and capture real time data. Uh, and that means we, we put the signs up without the display on so that it, it's not impacted as to. What is being, so if, if a driver sees the, the light, they slow down. We don't want that. We want the realistic. Uh, data that we can capture, that's why we don't display it. And so we did that for, uh, we did. Tell issues.
I think it just froze. Maybe would you please tell Christie to let him know just in case?
Here, I can tell him. They've been doing this for three years and.
Technology is a wonderful thing. Well, it's never dull.
Does computers still go?
And can you guys hear me?
I'm not gonna be quite as eloquent as the chief, but until we figure out how to.
Maybe go and.
Communicate. Is the TV. One of the first things that chief recommended that he's already implemented is activating the speed signs to be visible and displayed. So that drivers can see both northbound and southbound traffic, what exactly the speed that is registering for the cars.
Excellent.
Uh, sometimes, you know, we misjudge standing on the side of the road. Um, I've even misjudged my own husband coming home, but. He would probably say it more than just speed, but anyway, wasn't it? Um, so we, he, chief has already implemented that solution.
Like the little signs, what, little signs coming into town here.
Yes, but they're the ones that have been collecting the data thus far. You're saying they're gonna be out where people can see them, is what you're saying? They've always been out where people can see them, but they will visibly flash, whereas before they've been dark. So it looked like the sign wasn't working, but it was, it was capturing data so that we could actually capture real data. Because if you don't see it flashing, a lot of times you forget it's there, or you don't recognize it's there. Now it's gonna flash at you. Now it's gonna register your speed. And it's going to say, and you're gonna be able to see in real time. So when you drive down and try to, to speed down, you're, we're gonna see. You're gonna see your own speed.
Yeah.
And your neighbors will see your speed.
And your neighbors will see your speed.
Yeah, that's like the sign on the entry here.
Yes.
Yeah, I like that sign.
Okay, we are back live. I'm not through with Chiefs.
He gave up.
Really nice speech.
Are you going until chief show?
Yeah.
Um, the other thing chief suggested we do is.
She's coming up the ramp. He's coming in person.
It's coming in.
Alright. You're getting old fashioned now. That seems reasonable.
The other thing chief suggested we do is a traffic and pedestrian safety presentation specifically. It's specifically designed to the residents of the area, at least for right now, but it sounds like something we should probably expand, uh, citywide. Um, but to talk to the neighbors.
But, uh, the traffic and pedestrians, that's like, hey, the traffic people and. The, the foot traveling people both have to be safe?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will say this is really of critical importance. Uh, just yesterday. We received a, a report of young children playing not just in the street, but significantly in the street. And that cars and vehicles had had to break very quickly. And so, um, we wanna make sure we're covering an educate, educational component.
Yeah.
Pedestrian, shield, all safety. Um, in the area, all aspects, yes. Um, and I will also say yesterday of, chief had a very busy day in this area. We also issued, uh. Not citations, but acknowledgements to construction companies that there is a zero tolerance. For running stop signs and for speeding. So we have reached out to all construction companies once again, but this time from the chief police, there is zero tolerance.
Wonderful.
Is he here or my, can I continue to speak for him? Can I sound like chief? Apparently not. I have to put my energy away.
Yeah, that was fun. So, yeah, we had a, uh. Um, a set from a porch of a package and back down the guy in Mac, so that's where Jake's on right now, so it's been a kind of multitasking.
Good job.
All right, um, I think I'm waiting for some paperwork, but, uh.
Are you waiting for your bolted list?
Yeah.
I went over number one and number two.
Okay.
My guess is it's the same email.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just kinda go briefly. If, if we've touched on it, then, uh. Um, yeah, we, we have, uh, we have three different locations for northbound traffic on South Seventh. And we're gonna rotate the digital signs too, and that way we can kinda get, um, different perspectives. Of where we're capturing the most data and the most accurate data. Now, you gotta remember with these digital signs. And anything electronic or digital, there is a margin for error. So, um, there could be interference or there could be other things that are impacting readings, but for the most part, the data is pretty spot on. Um, as far as, uh, calibrating it, they don't do a calibration company, but we. When we set up the sign, we calibrated with our, we drive the car, uh, you know, fifteen miles an hour in, and it's consistent with fifteen miles an hour. So any speeds we get, um, that aren't off the charts. Um, like a fifty, cause when you see fifty, 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 that's, there's a problem there. The neighbors are gonna know that there's. A fifty mile an hour, or, 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 the cars going that fast, so. Anyway, I just wanted to give you a little back, background of the digital. Um, we're gonna. We tend to put out twenty-five mile per hour speed signs so they can actually, they come into the area or leave. Uh, so that they come in from the north, heading southbound or vice versa. As you enter South Seventh, that main corridor, people are gonna have that visual stimulus to remind them that the twenty-five mile an hour. Uh, is what the speed limit is. It doesn't mean it will keep them to that speed limit, but again, it's a visual stimulus to. To put it in their heads that, hey, I, I gotta be watching what I'm doing.
So with that sign, like I'd seen in the stop signs, when you approach, when they blink at you? And those speed signs, can you get them that way?
I'm sure they probably have something out there. Um, I think these signs are big enough that you really can't miss them.
Are you talking about the digital boards or the regular standard twenty-five mile?
Regular stop signs, I've seen them with lights on them that when a car approaches them. Where you're supposed to stop.
Yeah.
They, they blink.
These signs are truly big and for that, that area, um, I'd be surprised if they don't make an impact, but they do make those signs. Um, I don't know how that plays into city ordinances and things like that, um, but, um, I would say that. Uh, the signs that we have around town, and again, the size of these, not only are we gonna have the sign that says twenty-five mile an hour zone. But as you, the stop signs up here at the four-way, uh, intersection up here, where it has a sign below it where it says. Uh, attention. And, and it basically spells it out. Your max, your minimum fine is gonna start here. So we wanna have that on that sign as well, so that when. So we want to have that on that sign as well, so that when drivers are driving by, they see that. The purpose of the digital display is not only for the drivers, but it's also the residents can see this car looks like it's going to be passed, and they see the sign of twenty mile an hour. Because size and loudness of the vehicle always also play impacts on what your interpretation of how fast a car is or what you're perceiving.
Everybody goes up that hill at eighty miles an hour, you know that.
So we've been told by somebody on the corner.
Yeah, my neighbor really does like.
So some of the other things that we want to do is proactive steps is we would like to do a safety presentation for the neighborhood. It'd be open to the community, but really being this is the area of kind of where we want to emphasize and and you know, have the community a part of whatever that end result is, which is ultimately getting our community as safe as possible and implementing things that are going to ensure that, or at least help ensure that. And then we were thinking of maybe incorporating a bike rodeo where the kids can bring their bikes. So because I think one of the misunderstandings in this new neighborhood, because I've sat there a number of hours, just, it's an awesome neighborhood.
Yeah.
The streets are huge. It's a great playground for the kids to jump out on the streets, on their bikes, skateboards, everything else. The problem is it's a main thoroughfare. Regardless of cars are going fifteen, twenty five, thirty five, it's still a hazardous road to be playing for the kids to be playing out as a common practice, because you've got parked cars, cars that are coming down the road, you don't see it, they're distracted because they're on their cell phone, they're distracted for whatever other means. So I I, there's two parts of this. There's our side of it. How do we do what we can to be proactive and implement stuff that's going to minimize anybody getting hurt and reduce speeding and running stop signs? But on the other side, we need the education, educational component that we need to teach to the parents about the laws and the safety components of pedestrians and bicyclists, not using that as a playground. So it's their duty to teach their kids that these streets, you know, we all did it, we all grew up where we played in the streets. And and when you've got construction going on and you've got that length of roadway, there's just so much more potential for people to get hurt. And so if we've got parents teaching the children, you know, they're teaching the kiddos their safety, how to keep them safe. I mean, we've got, I think, along that whole road, there's cul-de-sacs or dead end, you know, areas that they're going to be much safer and run less of a risk. And I'm not condoning that they'd be on the streets, but I'm just saying that their parents are going to allow them to be there. We just had an incident the other day where somebody called in and said, I'm really concerned about these kids on South Seventh, and it wasn't because of the cars going by faster, the trucks going by fast, it was because the kids, that they felt like they weren't being supervised, that the kids were just being able to run and go out in the street and play and and there was no supervision. So I just.
I'm I'm kind of wondering, because what, after being on South Seventh and talking to folks, did you notice if there was more stress and more problems like on the north end of the street than as you got further up to the south?
You know, I I was, when I was there, most of my time was spent watching northbound, so I could pretty much see the whole road, at least to where the curve is past Washington, you know, where is it?
Yeah, from Washington and going down to the
Places there.
Yeah.
But I, all the time that I've spent out there, I have not seen problematic situations, and and it could be just the timing that I was there.
Yeah.
I mean, I literally would take my reports that I'm approving for the guys and I'll go out there and sit and all over my reports while I'm watching what's going on and paying attention to what's going on with the construction and the trucks and 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 of course, guys are running, you know, traffic enforcement and paying attention to that too, but really, we've got, we really got minimal action opportunities because we just didn't observe, I'm not saying that we didn't have a few people that didn't, that didn't come to a complete stop and they ended up getting citations or a warning, or there was a couple of speeders. But the other night I was, I was out there in the evening and it was so cool to watch the families go walk, and then, you know, the parents, they would walk their dog around the street and and they'd walk up into the new development area. And it was just, just kind of the you know, that iconic
Neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of a show that would, you know, what is it, the
Leave it to Beaver.
But you know, they were out walking the streets and and it was just really awesome to see that neighborly interaction on the streets. And and again, I didn't see cars going fast or anything like that.
But from what I see from the numbers, point one percent, nine point two percent, those are very small numbers. And you said there's some problems, no problems. There might be situations where you get like an error or an error reading, you don't have that number, right? Like it's something like, if if anything, it might be a point one percent or something like that. So those might as well be errors that the system have. And even if they weren't, they're still very small numbers. And my question is, why are we still spending resources with you being there and the city having signs if this is not an issue, from what I see here?
I I think because of this being a new development in the community and there's, this is, this is, I I think probably from what I've seen, a lot of citizens have had the opportunity to be a part of this and have input on this growth. And so as the development took place, I think they continue to be part of that process. So I just think it kind of was a growing pain to for people to perceive that there were issues that probably were, from from their perspective, it was a big issue. And it came back to their families and the safety of their families. As we have seen over, and I think that we did what we did over the last three months, so we could really compile different approaches and different data to really see where we're at. And I think, I think we've got a good idea where we're at, that it's not as big a problem as maybe the perception may be out there, but it means we still can implement some, some different things like the speed signs and and putting the digital signs out. But you know, at some point, we're going to have to, you know, it's it's not, we're trying not to neglect the rest of the city, but at some point, we're going to have to take that major focus off Seventh Street and redistribute it across the board.
Yeah, we probably have this much on other streets as well. So why are we going to be looking at this street? The whole city in mind, like it doesn't make sense to me anymore, right? We we shouldn't be spending resources there.
Some of that.
You know, I did, well, I would, while I sat there, I did see one of the construction vans, you know, it was on Wilson Street, so it was the very south end street that runs into the dead ends and into the undeveloped area. They went through the stop sign. And so that prompted me to call all the construction manager supervisors, and I really emphasize that we need to let your people know that this is it. We're at zero tolerance. Everybody will be getting citations. If they fail to stop where a stop sign, they will be getting citations. Now, the impact that that means is it's not just accountable to the construction people, it's to the citizens as well. And I I think when we started this, I think the citizens did say that it wasn't just the construction people, that it was their fellow neighbors. And so I think we're just looking at it holistically to see what are viable options to put in here. One of the other options was to do a temporary four way stop at Washington and Seventh. From my experience, and just so you know that when you put that four way stop in there, and and I think it's worth doing to see how what it does to the traffic and how it impacts. But you're going to see a number of complaints increase with regards to the stop sign violations. And you know, right now, we've got, we still have stop sign violations, but they're not as, there's not a huge amount of stop violation, stop, failure to stop violations. And I I think really to bring it down to to just a, you know, a really understandable and visual is that when when we initially get these, it's it's easy to make something bigger than it is. And it may not be witnessed by everybody, word of mouth, and kind of kind of make it bigger than it is. And I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm discrediting anybody or saying what anybody has as far as what their observations are valid, because there are valid. There is validity to what is being brought towards us or to us, because we want, when they do that, we have an obligation to to look into and see. But I did, but like I said, with that four way stop, we're going to see an increase in complaints about stopping. The other option is we wanted to put a camera, see if one of the residents is willing to put a camera up on their house that we can visually, when we're not sitting there, and maybe we're writing reports, because in our cars, we have a monitor that we can actually tap into our existing cameras. And we can sit there while we're writing reports, say up in Carlton Crest, we're writing reports, we can look on the monitor, we can monitor Washington and Seven, and that way we're still being present over here. Well, essentially being present over here and seeing what kind of activity in the cars are stopping and but I I do think we're getting to a point, you know, after looking at these additional items that we're looking at of, you know, just kind of breaking that balance back to the whole community.
I I don't, it's not really a question, it's a request. While you're, the police department is down here until we move into our new location. Well, twice in this last week, in this last seven day period, twice, you know, your, one of your patrol cars has West Grant, because they're going on a call, I understand that, but, and they may have had their lights on, I don't remember, but there's, there was no sound. And and there's, there could be anybody out there in the street or a kid or whatever, and so I would like to request that you put siren on if they're going that fast up West Grant Street. So that people are a little, look around, you know.
I will, I will definitely address that, just to make sure that we're, because the bottom line is, is if we don't get to where we're going, we can't help anyone.
No, I I understand the speed. I'm not, I understand why that's happening. Obviously, they're going on a call, and you're down here, so they got to go up that street. But if they could have a sound, because all I heard was just the sound of the engine. And it could be dangerous, because no one on West Grant Street is used to somebody, you know, and I can't tell you how fast the car was going, but I'm guessing forty five at least, you know.
There are some circumstances where we wouldn't have the siren on, and that is because of our approach. We want to have a silent approach. And so we would have the emergency lights. If they're going, if we're going that fast, we should at least have our emergency lights on. But really, in a residential areas, you know, we still have an obligation to use our due diligence and and caution with the environment that we're in, so that we're not
And so the sound would help it. Yeah, they may, they may have had their lights on, but you know.
If we, if we can.
If I've seen the guys coming up the hill, they've had their lights on, at least.
Well, yeah, so I I'm just saying, it was there and passed me so far, and you know, I was away from it, but there could there could be a dangerous situation by accident, you know, so.
I think Councilor Ward Mullen wants to be deputized to set the police on.
Sure. One of, one of the things I wanted to comment with the Guillermo's question too, is that we've been for a year or more trying to figure out for the folks on particularly right now out there on Seventh Street, what exactly is going on? Because their perception of the speed was that it was a lot higher than it is, and we've been going back and forth on that. And that's one of the reasons why we finally got to the point that we are now, because we've tried a number of things that the folks over there didn't feel like was working. So the other part of doing this over here is that in other parts of the town, now that we kind of know a little bit more about what we're doing over there, we can try other parts of town that do have those same problems, that that same maybe approach can be shifted over to other neighborhoods.
Yeah, I do think, I do think the finger of the pulse on South Seven, we have a good idea of what the dynamics are there. So I think because of what we've done, we're we're there. And you know, as long, if if somebody observes something, you know, obviously,
Yeah.
it's important to let us know if they see something that's happening in their presence, but here's a
Information being given to the people there on Seventh.
I'm not aware of any fires being
You know, the average speed is fourteen point four.
Oh, I I I don't know that we posted anything.
They have access to the package.
This. This, yeah. Results have the residents.
So we'll be, we'll be getting them out.
The rest of the town, just because we and I trust the numbers a lot more than I trust people I will miss. So we see, we see here that's not an issue. I don't want, I don't want to neglect the rest of town.
And I, I do think that we do have a duty to report back to our citizens, at least with the link, come look at these stats over here. That, you know, citizens and residents, we have, we have looked into this and here's the answer to the perceived problem. So.
Yeah, they can book a meeting, come.
Yeah.
I think they have resources if they will.
Well, it's
Give everything a pattern for you to be.
But I I think it's a a real nice resolution to the, to the situation to finish it up with a nice little educational workshop and and then I hopefully we can move on.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
In your experience, the type of digital speed sign up, I believe, citizen concerned about within their perception of speed?
I would say yes and no. There's, there are people that believe that so eventually, the visual stimulus, for the, for the most part, is very satisfying to people to be able to see that and interpret that, and trusting what that is saying. I I know that in the past we have put signs up in neighborhoods and it's, it's still not enough. And despite, you know, actual presence in forest, things like that, so it just depends. I would say probably eighty percent, maybe ninety percent. People absolutely love this. We used to have, you know, our our ghost cars, so I still give, I still have people come to me and ask me, why don't we still, why don't we put cars out? Because, and I I've told this before, but I had one lady that said, yeah, I did a dumb dumb to your pro car. She said, well, I was driving by and I I went down and put my brakes on and I waved and and then I realized there was nobody there. But what the point was, is that she appreciated that the cars were there to impact with that visual stimulus to slow her down. And I mean, even other communities and law enforcement have commented on how impactful, you know, a car being there. And you know, when I first got here, we had to start from scratch, just myself. So I had to do what I could to be a force multiplier, and I was putting a couple of cars out. And that's what we're about right now with the agency that we have, is that the speed, digital speed signs, they're a force multiplier, our cameras are a force multiplier. So all these things enhance what we're able to do because we have these tools available to us, so.
I appreciate those signs, you know, those, I mean, and they do, I mean, you know, I see it, and I you automatically start slowing down, and, you know, and I'm noticing them in other towns in the area. It's like other communities are doing the same.
Nice reminder, it seems to work on this bridge very well. Have we had anybody try and set records with the signs, or has it been fairly well behaved? Because I know the signs uh collect data, right?
Just you, Councilor.
No, I'm not, I'm not sure about those signs at entrances, whether they collect that or not. Um, I know from our neighborhood display signs, I don't, I, I can't officially say that nobody tried to test the, the waters, but we do have, um, we do have, uh, we can set parameters. So say the speed limit is twenty-five, we can set it so the parameter is um forty-five, fifty, so they can't go any higher. Um, and it won't trigger until maybe fifteen, twenty miles an hour, so we have different parameters we can set. Um, and that helps reduce any, anybody wanting to do that.
So where are you guys now with the Seventh Street?
I heard a lot of positivity about keeping the visual reminder of speed signs up right now. Now, we only have two, so if we start to get speed complaints in other areas of town, we'll need to relocate them, it's resources. Uh, I did hear positivity surrounding doing a traffic pedestrian safety presentation, maybe a, a bike education component to, for the kids. Um, how do you guys feel about the chief reaching out, saying we can put some cameras around the intersection of Seventh and Washington? We would need to get neighborhood cooperation, because they would be on private houses. Um, speed signs, are you okay with internal staff talking about using uh federal regulations based on what we see on the ground and determining where a couple twenty-five mile per hour signs go in the neighborhood?
We make it twenty.
Yeah. And we've already gone over that.
Yes, we did.
I would just mention that, like, kind of what Terry is talking about is maybe that's a citywide approach, because you have, I could argue you have the same problem across the way on Eighth, on Seventh, on
North Seven.
North Seven, yeah. You know, so, and there's no stop signs there, so.
Do you want us to hold off on that until we come up with a sist- uh holistic approach for the community?
So with these cameras, are they do, are they videoing, videoing, taking pictures of the actual vehicle, the license number, and if they're doing thirty-five or forty, then go find and call, give a phone call and write them a ticket, I mean.
So the thought for the camera that we're wanting to put up, it's just to put it fixed on the intersection, just to see uh if we get a complaint that there was a car that drove through there, we can go back with the video footage, and it would, it would be retained for, you know, uh, i- if, if we don't get complaints, or there's no reason to go back and look at it, we, it would be retained for whatever period, thirty to sixty days, um, and then it would be gone. But uh, the whole purpose would be to, like I said, if, if we get a complaint, we go back and verify, or we can see as we're up in Carlton Crest or over on West Main, and we're watching um what's going on at that intersection, we can observe that cars are still failing to stop. And we can, again, maybe go back there and address it, if we're seeing that problem increase and reports of that occurring increase. Uh, at the bottom line is, is no matter what speed you have on whatever street, you're gonna have somebody that's gonna break the rule. Whatever stop sign you have, somebody's gonna break the rule. It can't be there all the time, um, and that's just the nature of the beast, but when we start seeing a reoccurring problem, that is a continual and, and is enhancing itself, and, and uh, that's, that's what we need to be going in and, and paying special attention to whatever that particular issue is.
So then you're looking to put this camera on Seventh and Washington, if we put up the temporary four-way stop?
Well, even right now, we could do it, just to monitor what, what traffic's doing coming off of Washington on the Seventh. I, I think this is a wonderful idea. So it's, you know, and you guys have gotten so much with, with the cameras in the parks, I mean, this, this almost seems like a no-brainer, we're not we're not watching an area that's, that's in, if it tended to be a private area, it's a public space, it's a road, so your actions are observable, and it's completely legal, so, in my opinion, let, let's figure out who's who has an opportunity for approval, give them an education, uh, lovingly as, as neighbors, and uh move forward. Yeah, I mean, if we have a problematic few cars that keep going through an area, and we don't, nobody gets plates, we usually do pretty good tracking down that vehicle, and it doesn't mean that I stand up in a citation. I mean, we're very, we're very community oriented, so our first objective in anything we do is to get clients that's it. We don't want to be heavy-handed, citing people and, and doing it, but when it gets to that point, you know, we don't have a choice. We have to do a zero tolerance policy, and, you know, the mayor knows from a neighbor that was, used to live by her. You know, we, we, we did anything and everything we could under the sun to help this family, and to minimize the, the problems that were going on in that particular residence. And it just finally got to a point where it was a zero tolerance situation, and, and they, you know, they were held accountable for anything and everything that that uh, where they crossed the line, and, you know, ultimately it resolved itself, and so um, you know, we've done that with a number of uh uh neighborhood disputes and, and things going on that um, again, it's about what can we do working with our citizens to get compliance without enforcement? That's, to me, that's, that's the best option in any case.
Follow up real quickly on the sign question, um, I think that we've spent, while I can agree with both sides, we, we've invested enough time, I think follow-up needs to happen. You know, whether that's sending out the link to the residents, kind of doing something, and implementing, it looks like the majority of them would like a sign. And so if we research the regulations, you know, what does that look like? That covers your basis for both areas, and if you look at installing a sign on South Seventh and a sign on North Seventh, possibly, in my opinion. Is that what your question was, it's like?
My question was, is we can look at regulations and what we see on the ground for South Seventh or Twenty-Five, we don't have the data necessarily for for North Seventh, you can look at that, but do you want us?
I don't think we need data, right? I mean, what was, what's limiting us from putting a, a, a speed sign in our right of way?
North Seventh had, and still has, a stop line at Johnson. And they were going to put up a stop sign, and somehow the community said no.
Yeah, I'm not talking about.
Twenty seventeen.
I'm talking about speed sign. Yeah, I think that's what this is kind of talking about, additional signage.
So as a policy matter, I hear a request for South Seventh, who we've had citizen complaints about, and I know we've had concerns on North Seventh, we've also had concerns in other areas. So I guess my question as a policy matter is, do you want us to look holistically at the city and putting up speed signs throughout the city? Or just South Seventh, or just South Seventh and North Seventh?
I guess I don't understand.
How many?
It goes back to the, the planning and, and all that stuff, is why isn't this happening? Why, what, when development happens, why is there no regulations to put in speed twenty signs, or whatever it is?
So as Gordon explained at one of the meetings, our city engineer, that it's not typical to have speed limit signs, because residential speeds are controlled by the state, and people should be through the testing and everything else, of the awareness that a residential zone is twenty-five miles, is nobody changed them? Or do I send you?
That, no, that's photo enforcement, that's not necessarily speed.
Something but speeds as well.
But speeds have to be approved by ODOT, because they're regulated by the state, and so if you go and want the city to change the speeds, you have to get approval by ODOT, there's an entire process, there's an entire committee that has to be set up in order to change the signs, and when, internally, we talked about that, it wasn't worth the resources.
Is it worth the resources right now? Like, I feel like we're wasting time, or wasting discussion on on this, the, the number still was point one percent, point two percent, this is not an issue. Like, why are we still talking?
For the people that live there, it was an issue.
It's an issue.
It was a, it was a very, and what we were dealing with, once again, was a very, very vocal group of people that were very, very perturbed about the situation. Um, we tried several approaches to work it out, and it was not working, so we're doing this, this is probably, this is, yeah.
I think that sharing this information
With them.
With the, the whole city should happen. I think, first of all, this is a very good study and a good example, and we can reinforce that our whole town, really, the whole town, the city residential areas are twenty-five miles per hour. Uh, and I don't know, Dan, if you wanna say, if you wanna have a sign on your street that says that. But uh, you know, I really think it shows that, that we did something, starting with the council, listening to our planning commission, that was listening to complaints from citizens, so I really think it's very important that we get this back to them through your uh reach, outreach to that street, and then I think it should be on our website, so people can say we've done something. And for them to think about these numbers, what it means, you know, that, that's people are, are a tiny amount that are, you know, not speeding, so.
There's a double education there. One is that okay, they know that the city council is listening and is taking action and is trying to do something to respond.
And the police department is doing this.
And number two, I think it's a good reminder that our perceptions of how fast vehicles are going aren't necessarily how fast they're actually going. Because I sure as heck see a lot of people going down the street here that I think are gotta be going a heck of a lot faster than that.
And the third thing that Chief has told us is the parents still need to watch their children. Which is
Anybody.
Right here on Grant Street, next to you, there's two little girls that roll out.
We can't even go there.
All the time, and you're talking about cop cars going up there. It's a formula for disaster right here at this intersection. So parental involvement is one hundred percent needed.
While, while we're sitting here looking at numbers, um, the complaints, twenty percent of the, or, I'm sorry, sixty-nine percent of the complaints is based on speeding. And then uh, the following traffic calming features that people wanted, forty-five percent wanted additional signage.
Yeah.
Um, is additional signage, our, our little go signs, you, you know, the little signs that you can put up that don't they can show speed or not show speed and collect data. Um, is that enough signage, or do we want to put in a sign at the entrance to South Seventh, just to politely remind everybody before they choose to break the law, that way they can get their educational opportunity. If that sign is there, you cannot use that as an excuse, there's no sign, so.
We could certainly start with the visual reminder of the digital sign, and if that's effective, and then should we have to relocate the digital sign? By installing a permanent sign. It's one of those, oh, additional numbers on that chart, is that people do uh support using varied techniques to see what works. So we use the visual signs, the digital ones.
Yes.
That say twenty-five miles an hour, then we have to repurpose those elsewhere, and we find the complaints increase again. We can also put it as part of the.
This is actually another one of the reasons why we did this, was to try some different methods and see what works better.
And the signage is both speed signs and stop signs. Everybody thinks they want a stop sign, until you have to stop at it every day and hate it.
I think very much of having a visual sign, and if need, put up a permanent sign later.
The other, the other question I would have, and I, you guys probably don't have the data on this. Um, are there specific streets in town that you get more speeding complaints from than other streets in town?
Probably East Main, um, or Seventh. Not so much on West Main lately, uh, maybe coming into town from the.
Yeah, go ahead. I was, I was gonna make a cheap shot about the street over there, but it's okay. Go ahead.
That's too rough to do that. I go to primarily the streets every year. And really, I haven't, we haven't heard, um, really much of any complaints on North Seventh lately. Uh, we did have a complaint on East Main, so we were monitoring East Main with one of the digital signs. Um, but again, we wanted to impact as much information and gather as much information. I, for South Seven, so um, in regards to putting digital signs or, or keeping them on South Seven, I would think, I, I'm thinking that's gonna be difficult with two signs to do that, and it might be more advantageous if we're going to put a sign, something that's just gonna be there for everybody to see it all the time, and we never have to manipulate it.
Okay, so I'm thinking, just as I think you just said, but the, but the permanent stop signs up, or speed signs up, put a bracket on the pole, so you can go two or three weeks on Seventh, and then you move it over on Main, or where you move them around.
Right.
And have them flashing periodically. And as I've said before, Seventh and Washington needs to be a four-way stop. And I know the, the neighbors over there, they, they say right now they want a four-way stop, and after they have to start stopping for two or three weeks, they're gonna complain and complain, but they're getting what they're asking for.
And we are prepared, if council wants us to go that direction, to put them on barricades as a temporary measure to do the.
Right.
Try that, and then if you can put that camera up, you can watch it.
The only thing is for it, so it's an informed decision to remind council, there was a complaint that this road was quote-unquote designed wrong. It is a collector. By, as Gordon mentioned during his presentation, the role of a collector is to keep traffic moving. So putting it, and now we're talking about temporary right now, but if we do put up a four-way stop there, the road stays, and I'm not saying I agreed with the statement, after saying the statement was made, stays quote-unquote designed wrong. So just, just for an informed decision-making.
And, and again.
Coote Street was designed wrong, and North First Street was designed wrong, because they have stop signs, but they're collector's streets.
We'd have to investigate, as Amy pointed out, meaning some of those are only collectors for one block, so we, we would need.
First Street, North First Street is more than one block, and Coote Street goes from downtown all the way to the fire department.
True, excuse me, true, but it's only a collector from West Main to Madison.
So going all the way to the fire department is not considered a collector's street for the other off streets?
Yeah, I know, it's, it's.
I didn't write the T S B.
I, yeah.
So what do we want to do?
I think the first step is give the data to the citizens. I mean, we can argue till nine-thirty about what the best solution is, but that's at least the short term, we've got the data in front of us, we can give it to them, let them simmer on it and see what the response is. And we can continue with the, the signage that the chief is already planning on doing.
Right.
In the, the safety presentation, I heard that was resounding, yes. And also talking to citizens to see if they will cooperate with the police about putting cameras at Washington and Seven. I heard that was very resounding, yes.
Okay.
All right, we will move forward with those four items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
How long you've been waiting to say that?
Okay. Okay. Item B, um, resolution number twenty-two-three dash three-four-oh, delegating OLCC recommendation authority.
All right, this is in front of you, council, might be questioning why. This is our current process that we follow. So what we are doing is basically maybe using our own language, but codifying the process. And the reason is, is that the OLCC has changed their language just slightly that says it's a recommendation from the governing body. So our city attorney has. Advised that by governing body, by following our current process. Uh, we comply with the OLCC's intent. It does not have to go to the entire city council. As you can imagine, that would have time ramifications and process issues, and so. What we're doing based upon the recommendation of our city attorney. Is we are codifying our process, so if anybody ever questions it, it is clear.
So basically, we just need.
So. I'll move that council adopt resolution one-twenty-three dash three-forty, which delegates authority for.
I don't know.
Don't, don't.
What's going on here?
Tyler is.
I'm being a bad participant.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion that council adopt resolution twenty-two-three dash three-forty, which delegates authority for OLCC licensed recommendations to city staff.
Is there? All in favor?
All right.
opposed? Motion carries. Pool update.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, um, as is summarized in your memorandum, we have the working hours staffing pool going quite suddenly.
And, um, as of tonight, I have one more application in my email that came in at six-oh-five P M. So, um, we have one more application. However, right now, as it currently stands, we do not have the bare minimum. Of lifeguards to open the pool. And, and of those that have applied. That we've said we would like to have you for the season. They have failed to get their certification that we have offered them. Now, the bare minimum, to answer your question, Council Erickson, is six, and that does not mean that we would be able to offer all services, seven days a week. Swim lessons, everything that we have done in the past. It would be incredibly limited. And you would need to evaluate on a policy level of how, whether it's worth the resources to open the pool versus the outrage that the community would have.
Yeah.
I am going to let Amy update you on some conversations that happened just last Thursday with Western University.
Please, so we met with, uh, representatives of West Oregon University. They have an aquatic center and a program, um, at their university. Um, and I kind of gave him a rundown of the issues we're having and finding staff and finding certifications for those staff. Um, it is an industry-wide issue being short lifeguards. It is not just something that the city of Carlton is facing. It is industry-wide, and a lot of it is thanks to COVID, um, they closed the pools and these certifications last, lapsed. Um, and honestly, a lot of the guards aged out. Uh, they went to college or whatnot, moved on, um, and there just hasn't been that influx of kids to replace. So it is an industry-wide thing. We are all struggling. Uh, we have been receiving a trickle of applications, as Shannon has pointed out. Zachary at Western Oregon University, uh, I refer to him as my angel. But he is willing to help us out by getting and training, who would pay for it obviously, but we pay our school manager that we selected and hired. Um, to become a trainer of lifeguards, meaning she would get certified through Western Oregon. And able to instruct, and we can even do it at our pool, because everybody that we're getting applying is not certified, if not. Able to save lives. Um, so we would be able to do it at our pool, where we'd be a safe facility, and it'd be something where we can have some longevity in our guards. Um. Almost all of our guards are fifteen. So not only do we have young kids applying, we have very inexperienced, very immature at some, you know, some levels. Uh, and just work history, they just don't have the work experience. So it is imperative that we get training. Um, it's not only necessary, it's imperative, a safety of interest, but it's industry-wide, and Western Oregon is willing to help. But it's just. If, whether it's enough. At this point, is to be challenged. It'd be super helpful and great, but. It still might not be enough if we don't get the applications. So you guys need to be aware of that. We're frantically trying. We've been trying multiple efforts. I've reached out to the counseling department of every. School in Miamhill County, uh, I plastered this. Borderline harassment to some of these people just to try to get. Overdoubt, but the problem is, is they think Miville's operating in half-stacks. They're not even operating all their programs. Chaham Valley Aquatic Center, they're not a hundred percent, so. I don't want to steal from other pools because that leaves them even more over, so giving. The opportunity to be able to train guards would be a huge benefit for not just our pool, but the other side.
Do you, do you need anything from us at this point?
I need you to be aware that we are gonna revisit this in June. All staff is moving forward as if we are. We are planning on it. We talked about it at Department Heads this morning about the plan to start the boiler, clean the systems, all. So that we're planning on being ready, but in June, this will come back to you if we're gonna have good news over the top.
Can we, we put this out on social media, I'm sure? And are we suggesting like retired people or senior people could. Do these kinds of things, because they don't often think about themselves doing that.
Hundred percent accurate. They really, the only age requirement for American Red Cross is you have to be fifteen.
Uh-huh.
So.
We can put it out, so. So mom is certified, your kid swims free.
That would be your guys' call.
We're not having any luck getting fifteen to eighteen-year-olds, so.
Hey, hey, Grant, I think we need to be a little more inclusive dads, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, some of the moms that are home with the kids, they can come down and swim and hang out. And not, you know, they have dads, too, um, any.
Mm-hmm. Parents.
I, I.
Spend more time with your kids.
Yeah.
You've been wanting to see them more. Come on, David, we're gonna see you out there, right?
Okay.
You heard it here.
Okay. So that's where we are, folks.
And does, does Miamhill County have any kind of a jobs? Centralized job listing place? Again, I just can't believe people out there don't need a. Five hundred dollar sign-on bonus and all this sort of thing, summer job.
Um, we have, I put it in the new register.
Okay.
Um, and it's sort of, that also goes in print, and it goes online. Uh, we've done that a couple runs, but it's not always cost-effective for.
We have. An opportunity, and I do not. Social media well. But there are at least two. Uh, Facebook. Carl, I like, I love living in Carlton and the Carlton Community Page or something like that, and then there's also. Uh, the Nextdoor app that if, if we have a, oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's been, it's been. Floating around, I guess we gotta do again.
Okay. Just suggestions, that's it.
Can I throw an unpopular opinion on the pool?
It's twenty to nine.
If the pool doesn't open. Then we keep losing money on the pool. It's a money craze essentially. Because we can't open bottom of the summer. Do we ever consider selling the pool to private? Party? To manage the pool and do their own staffing?
The short answer is you can consider anything, and then it would be a very large discussion of the community and the council that have, especially given the thought.
Yeah. I don't think that's fun. More than that, I don't think we've got the time to go for that right now. Yeah, okay. Uh, D, rail quarter maintenance discussion.
Council Erickson and I have been having conversations with various county officials. And, uh, we have received permission by the counties. Uh, to organize a volunteer work group to help clean up and maintain the rail for more than is summer. Uh, the county is low on. Forest health. In order to be able to clear the corridor, and so they do not have the personnel or the resources financially or otherwise in order to maintain it. As you are aware, this comes up every single year as a fire safety issue, as well as a public safety issue, because it's overgrown and so therefore attracts. Uh, individuals who may have less than honorable intentions. And so, uh. Council Erickson, this is a passion project of his. He's already reached out to, uh, our lumber. I'll let you speak to that in a second. Um, about getting donations. I do need to be clear with everything that staff has on their plate. Council needs to take this on as a council project, needs to organize it, needs to organize the work room. If somebody wants to draft something for us to put in tidbits, we're happy to do that, but, uh, it would need to be council-driven.
What kind of liability are we looking at here?
The county council is drafting a liability labor. Okay, so they are in the process of doing that. So we talked to the, uh. The county parks person, I'm failing on his, um, title. Uh, but they are working with county council right now. That in any particular items we would need to keep into account while we're doing this, like. Bird spotting for the migratory bird species that is required under their agreement, their purchase agreement. By the way, county parks person now lives on South Seventh Street, so. Do you want to talk about what you've done already as far as donating?
Talk briefly to some businesses, the Par Lumber has stepped up, and they will donate, uh. Earplugs, gloves, safety glasses, just personal protection equipment. The Newburg Bar. And Tony said he's more than. You know, very thankful that I even asked him because Par Lumber likes to do that for. Different community activities.
Cool.
Um, I've got a few other. Uh, rental companies I'm gonna talk to about. Equipment, um. A, uh, local logging. Tree trimming company also about.
Yeah.
Different, different, so. Just rounding up. That type of equipment and people for that. I've already talked to a few people in town, and they're already.
I was gonna ask you how much of a crew you've got already.
Yeah, so people already said they're more than willing to come out. Uh, talking with the county. Parks manager, I don't know his title either right off. He suggested that we talked about just doing it. In sections.
Yeah.
Like, you know, start at one street, go down to the next street, you know, different, walk it off, do it. In different areas. And then, as you said. You brought up Peru and, you know, there, and about that. Property right now is county.
Yeah.
Where a city had no. With, uh, homelessness. Um, that we've been talking with the county to where. Possibly within the. Open, you know, with the bars somehow, some way.
Eventually, they might.
Get.
Cede it over to us.
Yeah, but as of right now, it's just they talked to us, done permission to clean it up, fire. For fire prevention.
Well.
Is what.
And those are your big concerns in there, so.
What it is, there's a lot of. Debris that's been dumped there, and the grass is growing. Uh, pretty rapidly.
So what do we need to do right at this point is just start organizing?
Or wait on the county to get the waiver form.
Okay, we're waiting on the waiver form still.
But that doesn't mean you can't have dissent outside of the council.
Start organizing.
And start organizing work groups in anticipation, if that's the direction the entire council wishes to go.
I'm good.
I'm in favor for this because. Being a firefighter in the Navy, number one, I can see all the fuel on, it's, it's all the dry grass, all the dry branches. It's a ton of fuel. You reduce the fuel load, you reduce your risk. That's just as simple as it gets. And then number two, um, having it open. And cleaned up. Will reduce our, our potential footprint for criminal activity back there, I believe. That's just. Makes good sense, and. What better way to do it is through volunteering. You know, we got our, our volunteer corps that we can get out, that grants, uh, helping organize, and thank you, Grant.
Yeah.
So silver growth, just from last year, just didn't they clean it up last year?
They cleaned a little bit. Yeah, they, and they, they hired. Contractors that did. The south part of town. And then they had some of the inmates to do the north part, but they didn't. They didn't do, you know. They did what they could with the resources that they have. But it still leaves a fair amount of work.
Is, is that something you're getting put in the budget to hire companies to do that? But you're gonna have budgets soon.
Yes, uh, this budget year and looking at things, things are pretty tight to take on additionally.
How much are we, like, we know an estimate? How much do it cost?
Uh, when we looked at some brush cutting last year, because we have several areas in town, we were trying to get a handle on that have become a problem. It's several thousand, it can be up to several thousand dollars. It depends on how big of an area, what kind of equipment they need to bring in. Whether or not they can just mow it, do they need to bring in a brush cutter? Do they need to cut down the hills, or is it just straight shot? Um, so there's a lot that goes into it. And I think the county had an estimate, uh, last year for a section of trail from Arthur to that, I believe it was.
Yeah.
And it would range, um, five to seven thousand dollars just for that section.
To maintain it for the, for the summer?
No, just one time, just one time, and that was just for that section.
I think we could, I, I would be willing to volunteer to help, um. I think it's one of those things that if you feel like getting involved in it, great. If you don't, it's not. A requirement. But. I'd be happy to help doing something like that. Be good to see it. And I would suspect that there are a lot of people around town that would be, too.
It could be a community engagement opportunity.
It's wonderful opportunity. It's one of those things that I feel it needs to be done just for the safety of the town.
Yeah.
Yep.
So can we, um, you say community involvement, we can invite the neighbors, because obviously the people that are living closest to that have the. Most interest in it.
Yeah.
So we'll put a flyer or something out.
Flyer post, I mean, I talked to a lot of the neighbors, I mean, that. Right in, um, Councilor Hill, my backyard.
Yeah.
And we talked to the neighbors around there quite often.
And that is something Steph can help with. If you guys create the flyer or the handout, we can copy it.
I don't, I did, I know we do both, like, a professional and volunteer, like, like, I know you said the budget is tight, but the budget's almost tight, so. Can we always find? Some resources to, to, to have a mix of that?
It's good to spend city money on city property.
It's good to spend city money on city property. It's not our property to maintain.
And getting the volunteers in to help start maintaining and taking care of it. Could be a potential for our uh, county officials to say, yeah, the, the city is. Is stepping up to the plate, so it's. Little give and take, and once when we do get that, then we will be able to, that sounds like switch gears. While being responsible to our residents to pay tax money to us, because if they're paying tax money to us. Then we're taking care of county lands, technically county lands, that could upset a few of them. So we, we have to be careful to. Um, be respectful and responsible with taxpayers' money.
Okay.
It's really safe, you know, I think it's great importance things like for the safety of the city, not have fires.
Yeah.
The whole city just because.
That's a very good point.
Land, so. Even if it's not city property, you see.
And we do have a lot of city property, we do need to maintain as far as right away and get cut down. So.
Yeah, there's other areas in this city that need maintenance that the city should be, or should be, they would like to be out there. Cutting and cleaning and doing, but. We could, my thought is if we can get. A crew of people volunteer throughout the summer months. Take care of this, then maybe that seven to ten thousand dollars. Uh, other money can be used on city property.
And uh, to your point, Council Brandao, it is something to explore, um. We're gonna explore several areas um, in areas of the budget in which we might want to be looking at. Fees in order to take care of some of our areas of town in order to keep up on our infrastructure, including parks. But especially if we're gonna be looking at obtaining more parkland, including potentially the rail corridor. But we're gonna need to have that discussion. In order to be able to properly maintain and keep it safe.
Okay, so we'll see how that goes, um, E dump days update.
Uh, this is uh, Mayor Council, this is really just an informational update. Uh, we were able, this is not scientific by any means. Amy doing what I asked her to do of counting cars and trying to uh. Account for how much we were filling the dumpsters, we do not have the official numbers from ecology yet, uh, but this is a. Based upon how Amy did it, this is a pretty darn close guess, we can all measure her success or failure. When we get the official.
I'll do better next year.
But I wanted you to be able to see um, what we were collecting at approximate comparison from last year. And approximate cost to the community, um. This is particularly critical, recologist then to be coming next month to talk about their rate structure. Also some additional services that we might be able to include in the rate structure in order to assist with this. Um, cleanup and also would be able to assist with other areas of city budget. Such as stormwater cleanup, street, street sweeping that we will talk, the hard conversations later in the year. Just an informational update.
Alrighty, um, East Main Street.
Okay, um, this changed a little bit since four o'clock this afternoon. Council Erickson and I, um, this is another passion project, Council Erickson's. And he has been helping uh, Correll, the contractor. And uh, was kind enough to organize a meeting at four o'clock today and sort of thisly was able to coordinate all of us. Including the Lamont Workforce Partnerships. What we left with at four o'clock today is that we are going to attempt to do three blocks on the north side of East Main Street. We are going to start because we've got a lot of construction right in the downtown center, you might know that it's Civic Center. Um, and we are going to start on this small project that is a speed control. Uh, mechanism right now, but otherwise known as West Main. Once we get the federal funding, we'll be starting on that end of town. So we're gonna start on the far end of East Main Street on the north side and. The block from sixth to seventh is a pretty good shape, so we're gonna focus on fifth to sixth. How can I count backwards? Fifth to fourth, fourth to third.
Right.
So that's where our focus is going to be.
The third to sixth, third, third to fifth.
Yeah, third to.
The west side of Sixth Street is where we'll start. The east side to Seventh is all brand new Congress.
And if for some reason we run into issues, we will try to be flexible. But we're trying to get three contiguous blocks that we can work on and get property owners. But again, this is dependent upon property owners agreeing, we've got to work on some vegetation issues. We've got to work on some things in the right of way, so if we run into huge obstacles. We'll try to be flexible, maybe work on another block if we have to, but that is the plan because of four o'clock this afternoon.
That'd be great.
Here in huge opposition, I'm gonna give the go ahead to. The forward with cleaning up and dusting off the letters and the grant agreements that we talked about last year.
Everybody okay? Cool, go.
Alright, we'll do.
Which brings us to fun days.
Thank you, Mayor Council, we had a fun days organizational meeting um, last Thursday. In which your mayor volunteered you for a bunch of stuff and I'll let her explain.
I just said that we were gonna be there at the parade.
At the parade, walking, handing things out.
Handing things out, well, that was what we had talked about, we kind of agreed to was that, um, I. I thought we had, unless I really misunderstood everything, which is always possible. Yeah, we were talking, what we had ended up with and that discussion was having the trucks so we could get refills from stuff from the truck. And that counselors basically would be. Uh, working on giving out. Giving them candy and reminding them that we're gonna be. Fundraising for the um. City civic building. So um. That's what I committed this to. And I, the deadly silence is a little unnerving.
If you develop flyers, again, staff can come, uh, copy those for you, if you guys develop them, if you want to hand them out.
Informational flyers about the civic building and about, also about fundraising opportunities for. January, or January. June, June the twenty fourth.
So as mentioned last meeting, I'm, I'm out of town.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this not, is this a, a point in time where we reengaged that citizen group that was. Wanting to spearhead the fundraising or is that gone silent, like?
Uh, they are meeting, um, it's uh, right now, it's a small group of myself, Christie, uh, Chief Martinez. Uh, Mayor, Council President and Counselor Eric.
That's the citizen group?
It wasn't necessarily a citizen group, it was those who were just in, involved, it wasn't.
What, what happened to the people that showed up to council and wanted to spearhead the?
So that individual, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 Rick, yeah, he's, he is, he is doing it, oh yeah, he's, he's still spearheading. Yeah.
He's the lead.
He's the lead, yeah. Yeah, he had COVID.
But the next uh, group meeting is this Thursday.
You didn't tell me that earlier today.
Next Thursday, okay.
It's not, does she mean this Thursday or next Thursday, she said, isn't it this Thursday?
Yes, this Thursday.
This Thursday, okay.
Right.
Okay, so, go ahead.
If you have flyers that you develop, staff can copy them. Um, Amy has also been working on handouts, addition candy. Flower seed packets, something that you can staple and card to and hand out as. The other thing she was looking at is magnets. You would like magnets, so. We need some lead time in order to be able to order them, so if you've got some strong preferences.
White t-shirts for people that are walking, something that brings, pulls us all together.
T-shirts, um, we'll get what lead type there is, what the cost.
Yeah.
Let's talk to t-shirts.
Uh, well, we have to look at cost as well.
So what, what shirts are you talking about, just t-shirts with a Carlton thing on it?
I, I don't know, this is the first thing.
Yeah.
Sort of an advertisement.
Maybe something the fundraising committee could.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay. There, do you want, are you putting that on your list? Oh.
I likely will not be able to make it Thursday.
Can you invite me to Thursday?
Yeah. Third, okay, so, and it's Thursday, what time?
Three P M.
Oh. We can talk more.
Absolutely.
David's got a, he's got an idea. So. That's kind of where we are, anyway, fun days, I'm. I volunteered you guys, I mean, if, you know.
Thank you. Volun, is it, if you're volunteering somebody, isn't that voluntold?
No, I don't think, yeah, oh, I, yeah. I don't think I have that kind of authority. I just kind of stuck my foot in my mouth. So there we are, folks. Anything else?
Before we move on to future council topics that's on there, I would like to talk about Representative Almer's test for testimony. Uh, this was forwarded to your city emails, morning, afternoon. Uh, my testimony that I submitted is uh, included in that email. Uh, I welcome you, encourage you to submit your own testimony. So that they can hear about the Green Canyon Marbury testing and water that's in a. The conjunction with the West Main Street upgrades as well as the Grant Street. Uh, feel free to take as much or as little of my testimony that's useful to you, but I encourage you to submit your.
Just submit it online, same way we did the other one.
I did, but you can also sign up or in first and.
The, the letter was a little confusing on that, so tomorrow is the deadline for getting these letters in.
The final public hearing is tomorrow, so yes, I would get it in as ASAP.
Yeah, I think it start, the public hearing starts at five or something like. Yeah, so you want to get it in before five o'clock. Um, they do have a, it. It seemed to be pretty easy for me last time, you never know again, but they do have a way to submit testimony online, so. Yeah, it's pretty, it seemed to. Fairly. Clear at the time, I.
Didn't show up to see our favorite representative. The next best thing is sending them an email, because they do get them and they do. You know, if you're, if you're a resident in that area, especially being a city council member, they do pay a little extra attention. Because you're a resident of that area and you're also into elected. Position.
I don't think, yeah, anyway. Start, go home and start writing. Anything else? Yes.
So I have received requests, and these are just a summary of the requests, um. I am bringing them up because they are not necessarily uh, within our council goals. So I want to get a counsel opinion about whether or not these should be on your agendas. Uh, again, this is not limited to, but these are the ones that I've heard. The presentation from CIS General Counsel Kirk Mylander, which I've not approached him yet, so this is just for the council discuss. Uh, presentation from staff about the planning process and describing how different types of actions are processed. Uh, this one came up from a joint meeting of myself, Mayor Council President and our Planning Commission Chairs. Uh, citizen engagement process for education, civic participation in council government and planning. And then a presentation from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, again, I've not approached them and know whether or not they're available.
They, the Fair Housing Council was a really. Uh, Council President and I went down to a presentation that they did in, in um. Salem, and it's a pretty interesting. Presentation in terms of how we are where we are with our housing situation and how we got to some of those. I really. Learned a lot from it, so. And um. The CIS General Counsel Kirk Mylander was another. Suggestion that I had made, he. Let's see, I don't know how many of us here were able to go to the um, the Oregon cities. The three of us did, but um, presentation, it happens that if he does it like he did it for the, the. Um, training that we went to, it's actually a very entertaining. Um, presentation on how to keep yourself from getting, ending up in, in court. And getting lost and getting sued because you opened your mouth and said something that you live to regret later on. So, I don't know, those are just my, those were just things that I thought might be of interest to you guys. Anybody else? Or you can knock those down too in some other manner.
I think another thing that that would be interesting to uh, to look at is our low income housing. Uh, stuff that is. At the end of uh, First Street.
Oh.
That would be an interesting future topic and if, if somebody was able to come and speak to us about. That project, how it benefits citizens or residents, I'm sorry, what's that? It has started and they're doing a great job and um, they're, they uh. They're. The group that's down there is extremely motivated. So they're, they run out of work because they're working so hard, which is a great thing, but um. They, they are also very thankful for the, the community members that come down and help out too, so. It is a sweat equity project, just like uh, the house that I live in and. It's one of the most wonderful programs in the world, in my opinion.
What I, what I didn't realize that David just pointed out the other day about that is that. Um, like we can go down and volunteer if we wanted to.
Yes, we could.
So. Actually, I probably will do. They'll run me off, but.
I think they'll be very thankful.
That was kind of exciting, but yeah, I wouldn't mind hearing about that.
Yeah, that same group that's gonna start building thirty of them.
Are they?
That.
Yeah.
Company, organization.
Yeah.
Organize, yeah, it's a long governmental organization that uses government and other grants to help facilitate. Low income housing of which, low income housing now, a, a new house is like three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So which I can't even, I, that doesn't even accept.
I personally think from this little, this set of four that a presentation on the planning process personally benefit me. There's a connection there and you hear a little bit about it, but they live in this world, we live in this world. I know enough to be dangerous, I feel like, like.
Yeah.
We've got new things coming, new subdivisions happening, questions are gonna arise, like, I feel like that would be a good. Learning session for, for you as a counselor.
We don't have to pick one, we can.
Being better educated on, on the planning process, it wouldn't hurt any of us.
Starting from when the developer walks in the door with the little. Kernel of an idea.
I heard some, multiple people say yes on community home builders, would it be of interest? That's the organization at the end of First Street. Thus far, I've heard less enthusiasm about the CIS General Counsel, which why I, I don't know why you don't want to care for the attorney.
Yeah, that was my number one, Joy.
She's actually a really good entertainer.
I think the la, I mean, it's, it's hard to describe actually, but the benefit of this last one, the presentation, the Fair Housing Council. It was very informative, very interesting. Um, I don't think it'd be worthwhile, all of you, you know, we already been through it, but.
Good to hear it again.
Could that just tie into the community home builders? You know, maybe a, a presentation by them.
You could do it that way.
That's kind of a cool idea.
I just don't wanna distract from other council goals and things that. Yeah, you know what I mean, has been designed and that would be a great way to tie both of those together and, and streamline into one meeting.
Do it at a work session, perhaps.
Yes, and so far we're sticking with the six to seven thirty work sessions, given the depth of material we're dealing with, yep. White eyes over there. Alright, is those three items enough for right now to as future additions? The low income housing, basically community home builders, Fair Housing Council, if I can pull a rabbit out and get them both to one meeting. Um, presentation on the planning process, yeah, oh, that's two, sorry. Look at me, I'm adding one, I have presentation from community home builders on twice. So it's just two.
Fair Housing Council's different.
Fair Housing Council was supposed to be at one meeting.
Yeah, so do both of them before me.
Right, so that makes it two. The planning process and the these low income housing. That's enough for now? Alright. Think now forever hold your patience.
Well, list anything bigger than three items is an ambitious list, we wanna be careful with that.
Thank you. Alright. That is all that is on your agenda for the evening.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? I make a motion to adjourn, there's a. All in favor?
Stay here for each meeting.
Oh, sure, that doesn't, no, that's all. Yeah, the, the plastic.